Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular township council meeting of June 17th, 2014.
Adequate notice has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared about the Daily Record on December 20th, 2013, and the Star Ledger on December 23rd, 2013, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2013. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on cable vision, public access channel 21 at 12 o'clock PM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Please rise for a flag salute.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Council President Karifi.
Here. Also present Mayor Barbario, Ellen Sandman, business administrator, Paula Cazarelli, assistant business administrator, John Iglesino, esquire, township attorney, Yancey Wazermus, township clerk, Joseph Kavalcik, Jr., CFO. Right here?
Right, yes. Oh, Ray.
He's on his way.
Okay. Upcoming meetings, July 8th, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Agenda meeting, July 15th, 2014, at 7:30 PM. Regular meeting. Okay, next up we'll have presentations. At this time, we'd like to take a break. We'll continue with the meeting until we go outside?
Okay.
Okay, we'll continue with our presentation.
First of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for coming for the unveiling of the plaque for former Mayor Jack Fahey. Would the former first lady, Mrs. Fahey, please come forward? Well, I have a few things to say. In 1974, when Jack became the mayor, I was at Brooklawn Middle School. And I, well, I'm gonna tell you how I met your husband, a long time, actually, a long time ago. Seventies never seem long when you do things in the seventies, but I want to commend him and what he's done for the township, you know, initiating transportation, senior housing, the daycare center, which is a gem in Precipity, and green acres purchased in an old country club, which is one of the greatest gems that we have and one of the top-10 municipal courses in the nation. So, when I met Jack Fahey, Mr. Fahey, I called him mister, of course, at a clam bake in Powdermill. They had the Children's Diabetes Foundation, Carmen Di Pasquale, and I used to help him out over there, Carmen. He put me to work, believe me when I tell you. And he introduced me to your husband, and I was really, like, stunned, because, you know, you're like, I remember in high school, we used to talk about him, because I went from '75 to '79 to Precipity Hills, and he was the mayor then. So, with that, Mrs. Fahey, I want to thank you for your husband's service to the community, to the town. He was a special person. And many times along the way, when I was mayor, I remember seeing him at Angelo's. He was always so nice to me and always so, like, "How's it going, Mayor?" And he can kind of remember how it was like being mayor, but it's nice to have somebody, you know, when you go around, you see that. So, I want to thank you for that, and I'm so glad that your family came so we can go out and we can unveil the plaque. If you'd like to say a few words, that's up to you.
Thank you so much.
Or any time.
He loved being mayor, and he loved the town so much.
Well, obviously, he did. So, I mean, I got to sit next to one mayor here when I was a councilman, Mayor Luther, who always gave me good advice. Yes, exactly. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I apologize. Former Mayor Letts, I'd like to recognize former Mayor Letts. Amy Letts. And also, former Mayor Michael Luther. Thank you very much. Henry, forgive me, and a former Mayor Henry Luther. I found out one thing about Henry Luther, and I didn't notice, but half my family knows him better than they know me. That's the bootin' side of the family, Henry. So, anyway.
We have some former councilmen in the room as well.
Okay, who's that now? I didn't see any. Let's see. Former councilmembers, please stand. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McKay. And, that's right. Councilwoman, Rosemarie Agostini. Thank you. Jonathan, I can't forget you. And Councilman Jonathan Nelson. I hesitated for a reason. All right, so we're gonna go out?
Okay, at this time, we'll take a short recess from the regular meeting.
Make a motion, reconvene in the open session?
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bids to be taken? Bids to be taken? June 26th, 2014, at 10:00 AM, sealed proposals for various sized containers, including heavy-duty, open-top, roll-off, rear-load trash and front-load trash for the Department of Public Works, rebid. June 26th, 2014, at 11:00 AM, sealed proposals for the operation of indoor tennis facility and provisions of tennis director, professional, and related services at the Precipity Community Center. July 1st, 2014, at 11:00 AM, sealed proposals for the roadway construction for Vale Road, from Baldwin Road to North Beverick Road. And July 3rd, 2014, at 11:00 AM, sealed proposals for project number PTH-1385.00, Precipity Troy Hills Senior Center Portable Generator Purchase and Electrical Interconnection Project. Requests for quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Ordinances for second reading and public hearing, 2014:12. Mr. DePiero.
Ordinance 2014:12, Township of Precipity Troy Hills, calendar year 2014, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA48-4-45.14. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 16th, 2014. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2014:12, be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Now.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. At this time, entertain a motion to open up a public hearing for this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you'll be given three minutes for each of these ordinances. If you're going to come up, please state your name, address, and sign in. Okay, senior one, come forward on this ordinance. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton. Roll call by, uh, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Whereas above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Ordinance number 2014:13.
Ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills authorizing the execution and renewal of a lease with the caretaker of Watanon Gardens. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 28th, 2014. Motion to accept ordinance 2014:13, to be heard in its second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing in this ordinance, this ordinance only.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Council President?
Yes.
I would respectfully recommend that the public hearing on this particular ordinance be carried, only because it came to our attention very late, and we just didn't have an opportunity to review the lease. I don't see anything wrong with it, but we just need that opportunity.
Okay.
So, the public hearing could be carried until the next council meeting, which would be July...
The regular meeting? Regular meeting is July 15th.
Till July 15th.
Make a motion that we table ordinance 2014:13 to the next meeting.
Which would be July 15th.
July 15th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Ordinance 2014:14. Mr. Stanton?
Ordinance of Township Council, Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amend in section 354-11, yard waste of Dakota Township Precipity Troy Hills. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of Township Precipity Troy Hills, May 28th, 2014.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on this ordinance, this ordinance only.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
2014:14.
Page three. Okay, one person at a time.
Have to sign it?
Yes, and state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Bob Bars. I live at 807 Park Road. My first question is, how does this ordinance change the existing ordinance? Valori, you want to answer that?
Rather than... Hello? Rather than putting out your yard waste seven days in advance, it's to follow the same schedule as garbage, it should be put out the night before, before 6:00 AM, the day before collection, the day before collection. Currently, it says seven days before collection. Yard waste has been shrooned on the streets and in rain and whatnot, it has caused a problem.
All right, the way I read it today on the internet, it said two days in advance.
It's, oh, I'm sorry.
It's two days, yes.
All right, I didn't know what the existing ordinance was.
Yeah, the existing was seven days.
All right. My basic gripe is, you're putting this off on the people, and my gripe is, how come at least once out of every three weeks, it doesn't get picked up on time? Okay, now it sits there another day, and sometimes it sits there two and three days where it doesn't get picked up.
I can certainly speak to the Director of Public Works with regard to that. Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your address when you came in.
My address? 807 Park Road. So, I'm a Monday pickup, which means, like, once a month, I have a holiday, which I lose out on altogether, and then, when Monday does come around and they're gonna pick up, it's like flip a coin whether or not they're gonna get to me on Monday. I had seven cans out there and three bags Sunday night, didn't get picked up Monday. Didn't get picked up till 1:00 today. Okay? And sometimes it doesn't get picked up till Wednesday or Thursday. And now I read in this ordinance where it can't be 10 feet from a gutter or from a drain? Is that something new, or is that an old?
That's new.
Yeah, that is something that is a new...
All right.
...addition.
When I moved here 24 years ago, they built a drain in front of my house. It's a little wider where that drain is. That's where I put my garbage can, no, excuse me, that's where I put my yard waste cans, not my garbage cans. All right, so now you're telling me I can't put them there, I have to put them on my grass? Which means they could sit for 48, 72 hours on my grass, which I don't want. By the way, that drain in 24 years has never been cleaned. In 24 years, it's never been cleaned once.
Sir, storm drains are the, cleaning of a storm drain is the responsibility of the resident. Please keep in mind if...
The storm drain?
A catch basin in front of your home is the responsibility of the resident to clean.
Believe me, I clean the debris off the top of it all the time.
Yes, yes.
Okay, what I'm saying, what goes down there, which you're kind of implying that from my yard waste is gonna clog that...
Okay, then that's certainly something I would like to...
Okay, in 24 years, it's never been cleaned, so...
Okay.
Mr. Bars, what we'll do is, I'll speak to the Director of Public Works. I'll even go down to look at the storm drain.
It's not clogged right now.
Right.
All I'm saying is...
If it hasn't been cleaned...
This 10-foot ruling, I don't like, because now you're telling me I can't put my cans where I normally would put them. Where it's wider, they're not out in the road. In other words, it goes in where the storm drains, so that's why I put...
I know exactly where you live, coming over the, on Park Road. All right.
Hey, Paula, is this all for environmental reasons? That's why they don't want the cans on top of the storm?
Yeah, we don't want any debris blocking the storm drains or going down into the storm sewers.
So, it's for environmental reasons too?
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, we have a better understanding?
We need to address...
And we certainly will.
We'll do, address, please, address the fact that he's not, that Mr. Bars isn't being picked up frequently.
I guess what I'm saying is, can we alter this for this 10-foot rule? You know, is this written in stone, the way it's written?
What I believe, one of the reasons for that is, sir, is if the bags are placed near the drain, and now we get a heavy storm, it will affect the drainage with those bags being so close to the drain. I believe that was one of the concerns with that.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, if it was 15, 25, or 45 feet up the road...
Right.
The road is slanted, it's gonna come down.
Right.
So...
Right. The other thing to address your concern, I know we must be in the same pickup, because I was scheduled to be picked up Monday, and it wasn't picked up until today. I would just urge that you call, and also...
I call all the time. All the time, and it's pick an excuse out of the jar, what happened today?
What we're trying to do, Council President, is, Mr. Bars is absolutely correct. If you're a Monday pickup, and most of our holidays fall on a Monday, we're trying to share the burden of the days off with other districts. So, say, for instance, Mr. Bars doesn't have pickup on Monday, he will have it on Tuesday, and then, we're trying to get a cycle where, okay, District 3 might not get it for that one week, because, you know, we just only have so many workers that we can do it with. But I've read many of your emails to our director, and it really has prompted me to say, listen, you can't have all Monday pickups be affected all the time, so we're trying to spread it out, and we haven't really come up with a system yet, but we're gonna try.
All right, well, that's one part of the...
Right.
All right, the other is this 10-foot thing. Can we get that altered? Can we get that taken out?
Legally, you can, but that would be a material change to the ordinance, so it would have to be reintroduced. But I don't know whether or not that requirement was prompted by any state regulation or not. If there's no state regulation, then it's a policy decision to be made by the governing body. If it is a state regulation, it's a state regulation. I just don't know whether it is or it isn't.
I guess we'd have to look into it. One of the issues, though, is the fact that, so if you were to change this ordinance, amend it, then everybody could put their garbage out in the public streets. Is that what was being said?
On the drainage portion, what's his concern about?
His concern is within 10 feet of the drain.
I see, okay.
And this ordinance is dealing with yard waste, not garbage? Okay, which are two separate things, but...
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
So, is this gonna get tabled or altered, or what?
Don't make the decision, sir, but I think your time has expired.
My time has expired.
My name is John Kalinsky. I live on 171 Wingate Road. I think he can sort of thank me for introducing this ordinance to the council that'll be made, because I have a neighbor who tends to put the bags out seven days or eight days ahead of time, 25 at a time, and when they get picked up, I got another 25 the next day out there, and he doesn't seem to care what the neighborhood looks like. So, that's why I had this ordinance asked about, and I was under the assumption that we would sort of adhere to the day before the recycling, that you could put it out, not two days before. But I'll live with the two days, if that's...
The two days was necessary, because, like, what the mayor had said about with the delay...
No, that's fine, but another thing I think the gentleman doesn't realize, if we have some heavy rainstorms, those bags get wet, the guys go to pick them up, I've seen him on my street, he goes to pick the one neighbor there, and they fall apart and they just sit there. That's what happens if you have some good rainstorm, so that's one of the reasons why. And I think there's an EPA regulations that it shouldn't even be near those things. And another thing is, if you lived in East Hanover, Morris Plains, you'd be told to mulch your grass. If you put your yard waste in bags, you gotta bring it to the recycling center, so you ought to be happy we're in Precipity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pappy Tatcha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Just a quick question, Paula.
Yes.
It's not up to the residents to take care of the drains, it's up to them to keep them clear, like, in the winter and stuff, so I just want...
Right, that's exactly what I meant. Clear of debris during seasonal debris.
Yeah, your leaves have to be off it, the snow has to be off it, yeah. I mean, it's a good ordinance with the drain and everything, but I got a problem with, who's gonna take care of it? Who's going to enforce it? I mean, we're making all these ordinances, and we never enforce them. How is this gonna be enforced? Think about it, let me know.
Nick, I knew you had to come up here.
I do. Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I'd like to ask, when it does rain, and it is gonna rain, and no matter how long the bags are out, when the garbage man, when he picks that thing up, and it's in the street, what is gonna inspire him or discipline him to clean it up? Is it that much work? I mean, how many bags could be breaking all over the place to where they can't clean a street up? And these guys, when they're done with their garbage can, that's where it winds up, in the middle of the street, so you gotta, you know, you gotta go through an obstacle course with a car. So, there is a lack of discipline in the workforce. And as long as I've been here, and I've been complaining about the garbage, especially on North Beverwick, I don't see any change, no encouragement, no discipline in the workforce from, I'd have to say, supervision. Because if we are getting complaints, apparently, I'm not the only one, there should be a carry through to the supervisor, to the workforce. And the drains, how about the drains up on North Beverwick? They're always full of plastic and debris. Every time I take a walk up there, I mean, you're just, you know, bring a bag, but once again, is there one rule for homeowners and then another rule for business owners? So, the business owner can leave it in the street, because that's the town's responsibility? So, it's, there has to be some coordination of all this to where it's not here and not there. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Council President, I'd just like to say something. In light of some of the things that have been raised and some of the things that we are trying to clarify, I would make a recommendation that we table it and work it a little bit more, because even between myself and Paula, even on the timing, it's not, there's no clarity in the ordinance itself, so I would, you know, like to recommend maybe we work it a little bit more. I think it needs to be worked a little bit more, that's my opinion. I hope you share that, so... And it's, we're there, we're getting there. We're addressing the issue of, seven days is much too long for something to be out there, because as we know, the bags that they're in with the weather and the condition, and, you know, they start to, they start to break apart. That's the good part of this, but I think we need to address some of the other things, so that would be my recommendation.
All right, motion to table to the next meeting.
Seconding.
Resend my motion.
Thank you. Nancy Snyder, 226 North Beverick Road. I'd like to confirm what two gentlemen were saying in regards to the public works. I'm quite worried about, you know, adding more ordinances to a department that really is not following through when people are in violation of disposing their garbages or their yard waste. You know, poor, excuse me, poor Michelle at the mayor's office takes a great deal of volume of phone calls because of this. They don't tag, the supervisors are really lackadaisical and blasé about tagging these garbages, making sure that the homeowners know they're in violation. It sits there, rolls on the street, gets hit by cars, then it spreads all over the place, so there needs to be more supervision enforcement, or else this is going nowhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you still gonna make that motion to table it?
All right, I'll repeat, motion to table, to the next meeting.
Seconding. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Valori, 2014:15.
An ordinance, amending ordinance 2013:16, entitled, an ordinance establishing white-collar salary ranges in the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. The notice for this ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 28th, 2014.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Pappy Tatcha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I know we have problems with the ordinance and stuff, but to me, you're backdating this till January 1st of 2014. I'd like to know the reason for that. Why aren't we making it effective as if the date the business administrator took over the job? Because that's when the old ordinance was exceeded. So, why are we backdating to the beginning of the year? Is that just to allow us to do this?
I'll answer that one, Pat. Hold on. Sorry about that. Wait, this is one of the ones I've worked up. It's just common business practice, whenever you do this, when you're adopting a budget for that given year, you backdate it to 1-1 to cover yourself.
Yes, but this was not the...
Right, but I'll give my, I'll give myself as an example. If I were to have stayed, and I would have gotten an increase, and we would have done this as of the date, that increase would take effect on 1-1. this as of the date, that increase would take effect on 1-1. So I would be in violation of the ordinance as a 1-1. So that's why you always conduct that as the first day of business of the subsequent year. Actually, I take it a little more, and I'm a little more conservative. I make it retroactive December 31 of the prior year to make sure that no one can ever view, even if it happened at 12:00 AM and 1:02, that we're ever in any contrast to our ordinance.
Understand it, don't agree with it. I don't agree with it. I think we're changing ordinances, we're not changing them at the proper times, we're not looking at things that we need to be aware of, and people are being hired at salaries that are not out there prior to changing our ordinances. So that shows to me that we have, I can't, I'm not going to say incompetence, but it's close. We should all be aware of what our ordinances are.
And Pat, what I suggest with the mayor and obviously the council going forward, we get overwhelmed with ordinances and there's no excuses. And I think what we should do in the near future, and once a new ordinance is going to be presented to the council, that we see the original ordinance and see the change that occur, so there's like a safeguard for the council to know that there was a change, so it's highlighted. So moving forward, we won't have those issues. I just, you know, based on speaking to the staff, you know, we didn't see it because we didn't know any better, and you know, the mayor had stated, you know, this is something that it was an error on his part. And hopefully moving forward, we can correct other ordinances that are in place, and if any other ordinances are actually introduced, we'll know the changes in those ordinances.
Okay.
Pat, also, if I may add to that, we are establishing the finance committee, which will be, which will consist of myself and another councilman, Mr. Valori with the mayor, the CFO, the BA, and that committee will work as, we will have an oversight of all of this. Because I agree with you that, you know, we should have done this back in November, December. But moving forward now with this committee that we have formed, this will address these situations and working together, this kind of stuff will be picked up on and will not happen.
Well, this was a big era. This was a $15,000 difference. It's a big era, okay? It can't go lightly. I mean, it really can't.
I agree with you.
That's disgusting.
I agree.
What was the other thing I was going to say? I don't remember. Okay, I lost track of what I wanted to say the second time. But really, please.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
Pat, I just want to say that, you know, I encourage all of us to review the finance committee and approve that because that will prevent, like Councilman Karifi had mentioned, a lot of these things from happening by working in conjunction with the administration. The administration does not see it, although he takes responsibility for it, we may see we can work together to avoid things like this in the future. And again, it's better to work in partnership than mayor and council alone.
Can I just say something? I read in a comment in one of the newspapers, and the comment was that it's Joe's fault. I'm sorry, Joe, but that's what somebody wrote.
It's always my fault. I'm fine with that.
So I'm trying to straighten it out, too.
No, thanks, Pat.
The finance committee, the CMFO will be involved with that as well. So again, in partnership, the administration, including the CMFO and the council that's assigned to that committee, will work on that. So hopefully that will not happen in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Roy Mesmer, Tendrum Drive. I just have one question on this salary ordinance. I know it's dated 2013:16, but former councilman Jonathan Nelson, as a non-sitting councilperson, brought up last month, or three meetings ago, about people who appeared to have been overpaid before this ordinance is in place. Now, we're talking, he's talking about, and I'm just reiterating, 2013, not 2014. What is being done, or was he correct? Somebody investigated this, the administration? Were people overpaid based on the salary ordinance?
Well, Mr. Mesmer, the question is not whether people were overpaid. People are being paid properly and appropriately what they should be paid. The question of whether or not there was technical non-compliance with the salary ordinance in effect at that time is being addressed by this salary ordinance. It need not warrant an investigation, there's no consequence for it. The salary ordinance seems to, just needs to be updated to reflect current practices.
Well, again, Mr. Englesino, I disagree with you, like on most things we do. The salary ordinance tonight is dating back to January 1, 2014. That's this year. I'm talking about, I said 2013. So if Roy Mesmer was working here and I'm in the salary ordinance and I made 105, but I should have only, under law, I should have only been paid up to 100. Are we getting this money back from these employees?
No, once again, perhaps I wasn't clear. People are being paid appropriately and legally what they should be paid. To the extent there is a technical non-compliance in the sense that the salary ordinance doesn't reflect that, that's being addressed as part of the salary ordinance. But there is no circumstance in which the municipality could go back to employees and say, oh, you owe me money back because hypothetically you were paid in excess, slightly in excess of the salary ordinance. That's not a realistic or viable outcome of this. The appropriate way to deal with a situation where salaries are not in concert with the ordinance is to amend the ordinance. And as the council president said, the finance committee will have oversight of this and other matters going forward in the future.
Again, I disagree with you. If somebody's overpaid in 2013, it's not relevant to this ordinance because it's 2014. Number one, that means we don't have the proper budget constraints in place. If a customer overpays me, I have an obligation to pay that customer...
The premise of your statement is incorrect. They weren't overpaid. They weren't overpaid. If somebody was paid in excess of the salary ordinance, it doesn't mean that they were overpaid. It means that they were paid in a manner that was inconsistent with the salary ordinance, and the salary ordinance needs to be adjusted, and that's what is occurring. So the premise of your question is incorrect.
Premise? I don't think so, Mr. Englesino. Somebody's overpaid and they're not following the law. If I do 35 miles an hour in a speed limit and it's 25, I'm exceeding the speed limit. You might not like my metaphors or analogies.
You're mixing apples and oranges.
Well, perhaps, but we have, you know, somebody said here tonight, nobody's attended more meetings here except for a lady in the back. And over and over again, not just this administration, other administration, oh, we forgot to change this, oh, we forgot to do this. Council president said tonight with this new committee that they have, I guess somebody's going to sit there with each ordinance. I mean, Jonathan Nelson even brought up back when he came councilperson, we were supposed to meet four times a month. You're only meeting twice, but your salaries weren't cut in half, you guys weren't sitting up here then, you three councilpeople. But I totally disagree with you, Mr. Englesino. You're comparing apples with oranges. People were overpaid based on the law.
Roy, I could tell you, I looked into it. One of the biggest issues that I found, and you're going to see with the new ordinance that we have going forward, I can't tell you if they were or they weren't, and I'm going to tell you why. The ordinance was very vague. It doesn't state what is considered to be salary. We have now addressed that. I can't fix what happened in the past, I can only fix what happened in the future. We now have spelt out it's considered to be pensionable earnings. So nowhere in our previous salary ordinance did it state what the earnings were. So I could have, if you factored in overtime, which shouldn't be in the salary ordinance, if you looked at other items, some of which that weren't supposed to be in, they could have been considered that. If you looked at a W-2 for somebody that got overtime, that would have violated what was considered a salary ordinance.
But you're educating me, Joe. So the salary ordinance just doesn't apply to salary people? It's also hourly people?
Correct. So, and that's one of the reasons why now we've addressed it and put in that it's pensionable earnings. So this way, when there is a question, now in 14, if this same thing happened, we could clearly delineate what occurred.
Joe, can you switch seats then with John?
Hey, Jonathan, hold for one second. Mayor, I would just say, you know, maybe moving forward with, you know, everyone's concerns here, once we get the transparency committee going, with some of the folks that are actually on it in the audience here, we could address a lot, a lot of those questions, and it'll be a lot easier for everyone to understand.
Sure.
Once we get the committee going.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots. I wasn't going to talk on this, but Joe, you kind of got me thinking. I'm using your own words. You said common practice. Is it common practice to amend the salary ordinance for two employees only?
We did that specifically to address it immediate, but if you look at the next salary ordinance, it's all-inclusive of.
Right, so, I mean, I've never seen it where we pass an ordinance and then we reintroduce the same thing again. I just...
Well, I could tell you, if you do a new hire, dependent upon who you bring in, it is common practice in towns. If it exceeds a range, that range could have been arbitrarily low going in the past, and that's the reason you would make these changes.
So what I'm, the way I'm understanding it from you, Joe, and from Mr. Englesino, because Mr. Englesino said was people are being paid legally and appropriately. So that's what you just said, wrote it down word for word. So I guess that the salary ordinance is really not so much as law written in stone, it's more of a guideline of what we should pay.
It is a guideline.
Okay. But that's bullshit. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to curse.
Tell me how you really feel.
It's not a guideline. The council sets the salary range, and the mayor has the authorization to pay anybody within that range.
With all due respect, I would disagree with you, only because it is the common practice that it does set the guidelines for a range of salaries. It's not all-inclusive. I can get a stipend tomorrow if it's not stated in there.
Actually, that's a good question. With a stipend, because we talked about this a few weeks ago, Mr. Englesino, if somebody gets a stipend, who authorizes it? Now, clearly the mayor would make the recommendation, but is the stipend purely at the mayor's own initiative, or does it need council approval? It depends. On who the employee is, or... No, it depends on way too many facts and circumstances to give you a comprehensive answer within the five minutes that you have at the mic. Hypothetical, Paula's been picking up the slack because we haven't had a business administrator. Mayor feels that she should get a stipend. I'm just using you as an example, you're up here. And that's a good analogy.
Good idea, though, right?
If the mayor suggests, feels that, if the mayor feels that Paula should get a stipend, does he have the authorization to give her a stipend, or does council need to approve it? Well, Paula's very interested in this one, I can tell. Again, Mr. Nelson, I'm not going to answer your question directly because, A, I haven't had an opportunity to review it. Well, that's fair enough. And B, there are a number of facts and circumstances that would have to be taken into account. Suffice it to say that the governing body, as you know or should know having been a member of it, sets the budget and creates through ordinances and resolutions general and in some cases, specific authority for the administration to then spend the money. And so with those general legal principles in place, there would have to be an analysis done in order to be able to answer your question, which I have not done. Fair enough. Okay, thank you.
If I may just add, and I know it was laughed and frowned upon, but if any member of the council, the mayor, ever said, "Bull, you know what," it wouldn't be so funny. And, you know, we would never do that because we would be scrutinized. So therefore, you know, my opinion is same respect should be given to the council as well.
All right, seeing no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Valori. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Whereas the above, the above ordinance was read entitled on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Now, therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
No.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
2014 municipal budget, public hearing and adoption, clerk statement.
This is the time fixed for the public hearing on the municipal budget for 2014. The budget was approved by the township council on May 20, 2014, and was advertised as required by law on June 3, 2014, together with notice of hearing for this time. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week, and copies are on the table for anyone desiring one. Anyone who has not secured a copy of the budget may do so at this time. I think we're out of them.
Okay, procedure for public hearing. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. The council president will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as nearly as he can determine. Address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, questions will be referred to individual members of the council, municipal officials, or advisors. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget. School or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered. Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Try signing against, against council president, or...
Just state your name and address.
Roy Mesmer, Tendrum Drive. Just one thing regarding the budget, and I know there's a big crowd here tonight, so I don't want them to think that I was at every budget hearing this year. Usually I am in the past years, but not this year. I was only here for, I think it was that Monday night meeting, and it went till about 11:30, and that night was discussed was the insurance page. So I'm very fortunate I was here that night. My question is, and I think the public should know this, that encumbered as of 12:31:13 was about $8.6 million for insurance. We are budgeting this year, budget request and the mayor's budget, it's about the same, it's 10.9. Everybody can do the math here, it's an increase of about $2 million. On that Monday night, I guess it was April, or March, I'm sorry, I asked questions on code, can't read them off because I only got three minutes, but code 334, 343, 785. My concerns were numerous. They dealt with health insurance premium increase. We encumbered 4.1. I realize there's an explanation for that, not all the bills are in, but Jasmine that night, based on my question, I asked her, "You are budgeting 7.4 million, why?" And her answer was, and this is for the public, no, this is the new BA, "I budget for the worst scenario." I think I made the statement that night, well, in the real world, if you did that, your boss would show you the door and you'd be out, especially when you have empirical knowledge, and, you know, you have a history. So my question is, first of all, with this insurance, because we've been promised by the administration that the PFR, am I saying that right? The Proposal for Budget, what's the acronym?
RFP.
P, yeah, thank you. Yeah, RFP. I would think that time of essence would have been for that gentleman, if you're approving this budget tonight. We have not received that RFP. Now, to fast forward to last week, again, I only have three minutes, it's unfair to the public, but I told you I was doing some research regarding insurance throughout the state. I have here in front of me a detailed list that I put together based on number of employees in a company. Well, we're somewhere between 500 and 999. Self-insured, I got to go fast, is $8.41, possibly with an increase of maybe $5 to $10 if that insurance company is doing additional work. I only have 30 seconds, so I can't explain that. The night when the insurance agent was here, Ryan Graham, he indicated, because based on a question by, very good question by the council president, he's making $38.50 per employee, which works out to about a quarter of a million dollars. So in real cap, how can you approve this budget tonight when we do not have that RFP? My time's up, huh?
Oh, I can answer the question, too.
Right, I could talk about the insurance portion, which you brought up questions on. It was the presentation that came up, there were the questions on it. As has been stated previous, one of the items is it did not include what is called IBNRs, which are incurred but not reported claims. So what ends up happening is as of December 31, you can only take a look on the calendar year. take a look on the calendar year to know what your actual claims ratio is. So, as of December 31, 2013, and Roy, if I'm off by a percent, don't shoot me, I think Ryan said we're at 61%. What ends up happening is, from January, usually through about April, you have what's considered your IBNRs coming in. It's your incurred but not reported claims that have occurred prior to the end of the year. So, what ends up happening is, you're still going to continue getting claims. Now, I'm not going to pick on any doctors, but we all know, not all of them bill very quickly. Hospitals, same thing. So, when that happens, you're still going to have claims that are coming in to be processed in the subsequent year. And it should be budgeted correctly, because if these are claims that occurred in 2013, it should be charged against the 2013 budget. Now, I've reached out to the company, and I've asked for a restatement to include what it would be with the incurred but not reported. So, this way, if you took a look at it over a calendar year basis, the way we do our insurance here is, it's usually a 12-month. We have an 18-month, a 12-18 policy. So, basically, we get to pay 12 months over an 18-month period. It's a very conservative way of doing it. It allows you to spread the cost more correctly, and that's the reason why the question came up. I could tell you, if you look at 2013 and you look at what happened on December 31, then, yeah, it's going to skew what you're looking at. If you take a look at today, we have about $78,000 left in that line. I concur with Jasmine 110%. I budget to the maximum exposure. If you have one person in that year that gets ill, that's outside of where your stop loss is, your stop loss is usually about a quarter of a million dollars. If you have those claims that aren't greater than what your claims were last year, you're going to have some major shortfall sitting in the budget. So, those are the reasons you budget to maximum exposure. You don't want, there's a couple lines in the budget, and we've talked about it, health insurance, utilities, debt service, salaries. I budget to the maximum exposure of what I believe we're going to have. You have your empirical data, you have your historical data, but when you take a look at it year over year, and you see your incurred but not reported, and you're taking a look at your runoff that comes in the subsequent year, you're spending down those items. That's why we're budgeting to those, to that issue. The other question I know you had, Roy, was on the benefits, was one of the line items. That was an RFP. So, if they come in with that number, I don't have a chance to negotiate it. Under law, I can't. So, we award it to the lowest responsible bidder. So, that's how that number comes about. So, with the health insurance budget, I've taken a look at it, I've vetted it. I think you guys know me well enough. I beat things up pretty well, and I could tell you, I'm very comfortable looking at that number and saying, "I have no doubt in my mind that you're not going to have a substantial shortfall." It would be scaring the heck out of me, and I've always given this speech of, "I don't like surprises." I don't like surprises, not in health insurance. I don't want to run a risk that we're going to undercut, we cut $100,000 out because we have $78,000 left over this year. Well, I get sick, I end up having higher claims than what I had. Now, we could be in the hole. Now, we're going to be declaring an emergency for an item that should never be declared an emergency. So, I hope that kind of answers your question.
Hey, Joe, I got a question for you, and I believe Mr. Mesmer was trying to point it out also. For the particular company that's doing the healthcare for the Township of Sippany, one is their proposal, once the proposal for the town go out again, because if there's other companies out there that could do it cheaper, like anything else, we want, obviously, to save the taxpayers' money. And I think that's what he was, you know, trying to get to also.
I can answer that. First of all, the brokerage company that Mr. Mesmer referred to is not paid by the township. They're paid by the administrator. That number is already in the budget. So, whatever they get paid is negotiated between the brokerage firm and the administrator, I think it's IDA. So, that has absolutely zero impact on the budget. There is, I received a draft, which I'm reviewing, of an RFQ, which should be ready to go by the next meeting. The real work for the broker really begins in like August, September-ish for the following year. And so, frankly, we're probably better off getting in a cycle of doing the RFQs in the spring and early summer or midsummer so that they're teed up to do that. We've discussed that internally. So, there is an RFQ that will be going out, you know, by the next meeting. I received a draft last week. I just, I need to get to it. But it has absolutely zero impact on your municipal budget because they're not paid by the township.
And John, maybe you could educate the public, too. The RFQ, how long does it sit out there for, for that request for qualifications? How long does it sit out there? So, we get it drafted up by August.
Probably 30, no, it'll go out before then. 30 days, companies will have to submit, and it's qualifications.
And where's it submitted to, so they understand here?
It would be, it would be published.
It'd be published, okay.
What I'll do is, it'll go out, it'll be on our website. People watch it all the time, I could tell you.
So, the public understands it here, okay.
Absolutely. So, what's going to end up happening?
Like any other RFQ.
We'll take the bids in, there'll be an evaluation committee to come in and take a look at the ball.
It's not a bid, it's a qualification, because we're not, this is not an instance in which the broker is, are competing on a price, on a price level. Again, they, that is built into, whatever that is, is built into IDA's contract. That's a negotiation between the broker and IDA. What we're focused on is making sure that we have a broker that can provide the services of not only procuring the insurance, but also in providing the support to our employees that they have become accustomed to. And the RFQ is being, you know, constructed on that basis.
Yep. And John, sorry about that. You're right. We will evaluate the qualifications for the items that come in, and we'll make a recommendation. Sorry about that.
If there is a better understanding.
Just for the record also, throughout our budget process, I had questioned the same thing that Mr. Mesmer had questioned as well, was the amount we're budgeting for per employee. And I respectfully did not agree with it either, that we budget for an amount now based upon historical data. So, it is a concern of mine as well.
Okay.
One quick question, Joe. We're self-insured, that's my understanding.
Just state your name and address.
I'm sorry, Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots. I won't curse.
Thank you.
We're self-insured, right?
Correct.
Who hires IDA? Who do we, who pays IDA?
We pay IDA.
Township, you voted on their contract.
Correct. And if we're paying IDA, they're paying Fairview. So, how can we not be paying Fairview?
We don't pay Fairview directly.
We don't pay Fairview directly, but we are certainly paying for them indirectly because we're paying IDA. Who pays them?
Nowhere does IDA identify the costs that are being paid to Fairview for us to review. I could tell you that.
Okay. Then how did Fairview come up with, or you, I don't remember who it was, that came up with that we're, that we pay, that we pay?
Mr. Nelson, I don't recall exactly what was stated by the representative that you referred to at that meeting, but, I mean, facts are facts, okay? The fact is, there is no township check that is cut to the broker.
Absolutely correct.
Okay. The administrator, within their proposal, will allot for some fee for a broker, irrespective of who the broker is, because that's the way insurance works. What that fee is, is the subject of a negotiation between the broker and the administrator. The township does not participate in that negotiation. The township does not sanction that negotiation, nor does the township pay the broker.
Directly.
The township doesn't pay the broker.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with that. But it's part of, it's built into the premium that we pay every month.
It is not identified within the premium.
And who came up with the number, I just don't remember, that we pay approximately $38 per employee per month?
Again, I don't think the representative said that the township pays anything. I think the premise of your question is simply incorrect, as a matter of fact.
All right. My question, I know I want to ask. I want to ask is, who pays the broker? How does a broker get reimbursed, and where does that money come from? How about that?
Again, Mr. Nelson, as I just indicated, at least twice, I'll say it again, the broker is paid by the administrator, who I believe is IDA.
IDA.
That's who pays the broker.
Okay.
I can't speak on behalf of IDA what they do. I could tell you, IDA pays them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. See no one else come forward. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Resolution 2014, colon, 81. Resolution of the Township of Sippany Troy Hills Township Council to adopt the 2014 municipal budget, motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
No.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Our 2014-081A Resolution of Township Council, Township of Sippany Troy Hills approving capital budget amendment.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Morris County Preservation Trust application, public hearing and adoption, clerk statement.
This is the time fixed for the public hearing on the resolution authorizing an application to the Morris County Preservation Trust for the acquisition of a portion of the property identified as Block 421, Lot 29, and fronting on Intervale Road. Notice of this public hearing was advertised as required by law and the Morris County Preservation Trust rules and regulations on June 6, 2014, together with a notice of hearing for this time. Printed copies of the resolution are on the table for anyone desiring one. There were on the copy, if you have one, please share.
Okay. Procedure for the public hearing. Each person desiring to be heard will rise, give his or her name and address before speaking. The council president will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as nearly as he can determine. Address all questions to the council president. Where necessary, questions will be referred to individual members of the council, municipal officials, or advisors. Questions must be confined solely to the resolution. Unrelated comments or questions are not proper for this hearing and will not be discussed or answered.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. Council President? Yes, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Council President. Just a very brief presentation. This proposed application to be considered by the council, as indicated by the clerk, is for property located at Block 421 and is a portion of Lot 29. It is a portion of the Water View property, which was the subject of a zone change petition made by RD Realty last year. The application is for $3.5 million towards the acquisition of 9.26 acres, which is sort of the upslope of the northern area. There is a map, which is also on the table and also that the council has, that depicts the subject property outlined in red. So, if you want the map, it's there. We have an appraisal for the property, which is above the amount that is being applied for. The application is due this Friday, June 20. So, if the application is not submitted by this Friday, then the township will not be able to apply for open space funding from Morris County this year, and they would have to wait until next year before making an application. I will also point out that the application may be withdrawn by the town council by simple resolution at any time. Now, the application is for $3.5 million. There is a municipal contribution towards that amount, which is unspecified under the, under the rules, but we anticipate about a 20% contribution requirement, which, if I can do my math right, is $700,000. The township has $721,355 available in unused green acres funds, which can be appropriated and used towards the township's contribution towards this grant, and that is, will be detailed in the application. Now, as everyone, I think, knows, or most people know, RD Realty has filed a lawsuit against the township due to the town's, you know, not agreeing to rezone the Water View property. That is in current litigation. So, while I am limited as to what I can say about it, I do think, and with the council's concurrence, the council believes that there is a public interest and appropriate, it is appropriate to at least provide some basic information so that there is as broad of a context as possible to understand why this amount and why this particular piece of property. The township has been engaged in settlement negotiations with RD Realty, which have identified basic terms which could form the basis for a settlement agreement. Could. There is no settlement agreed to, but we've identified basics, basic terms that could be used to form a settlement agreement. One such term is the property that would be forever preserved as open space, which is the subject of the application. And once property is acquired with open space dollars, it can never be developed. So, that is one way to forever preserve that 9.26 acres as open space. Now, again, I want to emphasize that if settlement is not achieved in a timely manner, that the township can withdraw the application for open space. Now, in a perfect world, we would have settled first, or at least agreed upon terms of a settlement, and then after the settlement was achieved, we would have applied for open space funding. And as we all know, the world, as glorious as it is, is not perfect. And we have not achieved, and what do I know if we will achieve, a settlement. But if there is going to be a settlement, and there is going to be property preserved as a matter of the settlement that is contemplated or being discussed at the moment, it would be this 9.26 acre piece. So, the council can consider a resolution supporting this application, and they can later withdraw it if they don't like the settlement, if the settlement falls through for whatever reason. So, sequentially, you know, we're not operating in the perfect sequence in the sense that you'd like to have a settlement first, but, you know, there's a deadline of this Friday to apply. And so, that's the reason for somewhat of the unorthodox sequential way in which we are proceeding. Now, in the interest, hopefully, of brevity, there were some questions that were provided to the clerk at the last meeting by Mr. Young, and I will try to address those questions as best I can. The first question was that for nearly nine months, you've indicated that you couldn't pursue open space funding because the RD Realty litigation prevented you from doing this. The litigation is still happening, so what changed? Why is it okay to pursue open space funding now? I think I've addressed that. The answer is, is that we now have a willing seller of 9.26 acres, and we have the potential for a settlement, potential for a settlement. So, that's why there's a pursuit of open space now. We have a willing seller for a portion of the property. On May 22, a hearing was held in Morristown regarding the lawsuit. The judge concluded that since the lawsuit has no basis, I wish that were true. The judge didn't say that. The judge, I think, summarized my position correctly in that regard. But the upshot of that meeting was, is that there is a briefing schedule that has been set forth by court order to brief the issue of whether or not the court will grant summary judgment. Our brief is due on Friday, June 27. RD Realty then has to submit a brief by July 25, and then we have a reply that's due August 7 or 8. I can't recall which. And so, as you can see, there is a window within which... And so, as you can see, there is a window within which we have to either settle the case or not. And that window is really going to be dictated by, not only the schedule of the litigation, but really more so the schedule of the Open Space Committee to consider applications. Next question was, have we discussed open space funding with RD Realty as part of the settlement against the town? If so, are you considering granting them or rezoning on the Waterview property in exchange for reduced retail development? If so, isn't this a violation of your own decision not to rezone Waterview and permit mixed residential retail zoning to overlay the POD zone? It would not be appropriate to comment on settlement negotiations at this time outside of the purview of what has been discussed for purposes of this resolution. So I'm really just not able to comment on that. The next question, beyond what I've already said. The next question was, have you ever seen any evidence that RD Realty still has an ongoing legitimate contract with the Waterview property owner, Bellmead, and still has the right to pursue building on the land? If so, what evidence? What is the duration of RD Realty's contract with Bellmead? Or did it expire? If expired, when did it expire? The answer is that we have asked, we've made repeated requests for a copy of that contract. It has not been provided to us. We have representation, several representations from the lawyer for RD Realty, that they are under contract. He's also represented to us that in terms of our settlement negotiations, that they have been in close contact with the property owner, and we have no choice at this particular time other than to accept the representations of RD Realty's attorney, and I have no reason to doubt his representations in this regard. Next question is, do you have any indication that Bellmead would be willing to sell nine point two acres of the Waterview property in exchange for the right of RD Realty to build on the remaining seventeen point four acres? Again, we do have an indication that there would be a willing seller with respect to the nine point two six acres. Beyond that, it really would not be appropriate for me to comment at this particular time. When was the last time the Open Space Committee met? The Open Space Committee met last week and approved the application for addition to the open space plan for the township. So that has occurred, which makes question seven moot, which again pertained to the Open Space Committee. Next question, why did Mayor Barberio create an ad hoc open space committee of residents to advise Open Space Committee and yet has never called the meeting? You know, quite frankly, once the litigation was filed, that sort of changed the whole way in which it was contemplated that this matter would proceed. But again, a meeting of the Open Space Committee was had. The next question was, what efforts have been made to seek other types of open space and conservation funding for the Waterview property? For example, why haven't you applied to the Morris County Open Space Funds since they have over twenty million dollars available? Why haven't you applied for green acre funding? Why haven't you sought private grants or other types of environmental conservation funding? Good question, and application to Morris County for open space funds is exactly what is on the agenda tonight, so that is being done. Given the amount of money that's available in the Morris County Open Space Trust Fund, together with the municipal contribution, I think it's our judgment that that should be sufficient to be able to cover the cost of what is being applied for. Next question is, in your opinion, what percentage of the Waterview property can be covered with impervious surface by a builder? Or what do you base this number in calculation? Have you taken into account the totality of the one hundred and thirty-two acres of the Waterview pod zoning when you make this calculation? The answer is, I don't know. It's a question for the planner. I don't have an answer to that question. Next question is, have there been discussions or determination made to seek open space funding for the Waterview property? And again, yes, insofar as this application is on the agenda tonight. If so, how many acres? Okay, the answer, nine point two six acres is the subject of the application. What would be the intended use of the nine point two acres if you were able to purchase it? Again, I want to emphasize this point. Once property is purchased with open space dollars, it cannot be developed. It will be forever preserved. There is the possibility of the potential for a grading easement, and you will note on the map that you have, you will see a little area within a dotted line. And although the type is very, very small, I didn't think I needed reading glasses, but maybe I do. It says proposed grading and retaining wall easement. Now, is my understanding, and we will get confirmation on this, that if there is any retaining wall, that the retaining wall would actually have to be on the, could not be on the property that would be being acquired with the open space money, that any structure would have to be on the subdivided property, but that there could be an area for grading on the property acquired with open space, and that area is depicted on the map. If you were able to purchase nine point two acres of the Waterview property with open space money, would there be restrictions in the deed prohibiting any building on the land and to maintain it as natural state as Morris County Open Space Funding Committee does? The answer is, yes, there would be a restriction in the deed, and all the property could only be used for open space, passive open space. There are provisions in the open space rules for trails and that sort of thing, which I don't think would be applicable to this piece of property. I think the idea here would be that the property would just be preserved in its natural state, except for the potential for some grading. Why wouldn't you seek open space funding to purchase the entire twenty-six point six acres of the Waterview property? And the answer to that is, at the moment, we don't have a, which is not there yet. It's not the appropriate issue to consider that option at this time due to the fact that we're in litigation and due to the fact that we're in settlement discussions and due to the fact that the settlement discussions involve the potential of a willing seller to potentially sell the nine point two six acres. In terms of the dollar amount being sought for Waterview open space funds, again, three point five million dollars. The amount of open space funding currently available in Parsippany, I think it's slightly in excess of five million. That's a matter of public record. If the entire open space funds are not being applied to Waterview, how are they being allocated? What are the dollar amounts of the allocation? There is an open space ordinance that the council passed just a couple of years ago, which sets forth allocations. There is an open space plan for the township, which provides for how that money would be utilized over time, and that open space plan is periodically updated by the Open Space Committee and considered by the council. What other properties are being earmarked? And there's a bunch of questions here that really all pertain to Mount Taber. As I indicated publicly at the end of the last meeting, there are no discussions currently, and we do not foresee any further discussions with Mount Taber regarding the prospective purchase of either property or conservation easement. So all of those questions are really moot and not relevant. I know there was some speculation about that, but there are no discussions in that regard. I believe, Mr. Council President, that addresses all the questions that were posed to us and hopefully gives the public some information and knowledge regarding the nature of the application.
Mr. Anglassino, I appreciate what you said. Can that be delivered to the clerk for distribution to all council members, the answers? So we have them in front of us?
I didn't read the answers.
Remember, the question.
The questions can be, frankly, I have a couple of my illegible notes in the margins, but I just, I didn't read my answers. They were.
Okay. Can the questions be sent to us as well? Because that was from the last meeting. It was nicely laid out by the residents.
All right. Well, we're gonna have to use some white out. Or, Mr. Young, do you have another copy of your questions?
It's not here.
Oh, I thought that was, you know, all right.
Let's get the tape.
Fair enough. We're gonna have to white out my little notes here, because that would be attorney-client privileged or work product. So if you can white it out.
Do you need those questions?
That's what the councilman has asked for.
I think I have a copy.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. If I have a copy, I'll have to wipe out.
We'll get them from the mayor, and we'll distribute them that way.
That'd be great, thank you.
Clean copy is a good copy.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if anyone would like to come forward? Please state your name, address. You'll be given three minutes.
Good evening. I'm John Garrison from seventy-eight Intervale Road, Mountain Lakes, and I'm concerned about potentially purchasing a portion of the aforementioned property, the Waterview property. Obviously, the lawsuit has not, you know, meant that certain people have not been in negotiations with the developer. It's obvious that, you know, some folks up here have done that. The public is seeing the results of this for the first time tonight. So obviously, there's been a whole plan put together. Nine point two acres is no accident. The fact that there is a retaining wall is no accident. There's obviously a backup plan with the developer. What we're talking about here, folks, is a very precious resource. This is the last large parcel that we have in Parsippany, and it really affects the quality of life of everyone in the community going forward. It's really a major source for aquifer recharge in the fall. We went over a lot of things, you know, traffic, light pollution and so forth. So we really need to go for a hundred percent. We need to pursue all available funding opportunities. You know, we keep hearing we don't have the money. Well, the public has not had an opportunity to partner with members of council, partner with the mayor, and really go out and find out what are all the available resources out there. The value of this property is gonna be based on the zoning. Now, the council made a very courageous vote last October and voted not to change the POD zoning. Obviously, if this open space is purchased, the balance of the property, the zoning's gonna be changed. It's going to be developed. And obviously, that's gonna put a different economic value on that parcel. Now, currently, Bellmead is paying about fifty thousand dollars in taxes on the entire twenty-six acre parcel based on POD for a valuation of roughly two million. They have, we're told, been granted a farmland designation for 2015. That's going to bring the valuation down further. This is all about zoning. This is all about council and mayoral leadership in upholding POD zoning. So really, what we're talking about here is, the good news is, I mean, there's a ton of good news here. I don't want to stand up here and, you know, be negative. The mayor and the council have a fabulous opportunity here to show leadership. The judge basically said, I mean, Mr. Anglassino and I will probably disagree on what the judge said, what he said on May twenty-second. He talked about a disgruntled developer. Folks, all we have to do is stand firm, and you did that last October, you know, very courageously. Get the lawsuit dismissed. Pursue the summary judgment. Reconvene the opening Open Space Committee. I'll take fifteen more seconds. Basically, tell the developer no. There was a gentleman in here, I wish he were still here. He was holding about a twelve-month-old child.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Your leadership or lack of.
Sir, your time is up.
Is going to impact future generations. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm looking for that flag.
He's got you covered.
Starting. Okay, thank you. Good evening. Ron Owens, one fifty-four Intervale Road. I call your attention to the elevation map. There are many elements of what you're doing that are very, very encouraging, that are evident, that you've listened to a lot of our concerns, and we salute the spirit of what's gonna happen. I do have to ask, Mr. Anglassino, I physically wasn't able to hear what you said about that easement, and I'm just asking if you could repeat what you said about that.
I will at the end of your three minutes, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, it'll be tough for me to respond then. Okay. I'm just curious about how this particular configuration of the nine point two six acres occurred. If I do my math correctly, and it was never my strong suit, if you look along Intervale Road, there's a hundred and seven-foot setback, and then there's a forty, of which forty-five feet does allow an easement for a retaining wall. That leaves sixty-two feet from the perimeter of Intervale Road to a place where they could put a wall. Well, right now, there is a very, very significant ridge there. And if they were to go ahead and employ their destruction there at sixty-two feet, the ridge would come down. Those trees that line that whole area would be ruined. So, there you go. I'm done.
Okay.
Go ahead. Jump in, man.
Thank you. I can answer that. The easement area, first of all, there would be no structures within the property that would be acquired. So that hundred and seven-foot buffer would be a hundred and seven feet with no structures.
Including a wall?
No structures, including the wall. All that could occur within that easement area would be grading, okay? Would be grading. There would be no structures. Structures, to the extent a retaining wall would be proposed, and I don't know whether retaining walls are proposed or not at this point. If there were, I think they would probably be along the other side of the property. They would have to be on the other subdivided lot. So if you look at this map, the structures of retaining walls would have to be on lot one. On this map, lot two would be the lot that would be acquired. So there would be no structures.
Okay. So essentially, it's a hundred and seven feet.
Of buffer.
Of buffer. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. It seems that the conclusions of the Waterview episode meant absolutely nothing to anyone, and we're giving two sides to what is now a one-sided story. I wanted to speak for five minutes, but I'm only getting three here. Now, I have a question. If Bellmead had this property reassessed under the farmlands as woodlands, he's going to go from what he's paying now in taxes to approximately fifteen hundred dollars a year. Now, if he can do that, if he can play that game, that should also open the door for this council and the planning board to rezone that property, because it's now woodland assessed for open space, or at the very least, reduce the price for sale in some eminent domain. But in the highest best use for this property is not retail. It's groundwater recharge, flood control, biodiversity and beauty, and enhancement to a traditional Parsippany neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. It's almost as beautiful as Lake Hiawatha. Par Troy is a buried valley aquifer. This is the importance of the recharge, with heavy down draw during summer months and a limited rate of recharge to the aquifer. Notice that the system has contracts to purchase water from J C U M U, J C M U A, M C M U A. Without these contracts, in place, Par Troy would have a shortfall in water availability. This is from the Bureau of Water Allocation and the DEP of the State of New Jersey. I also might like to say one thing. It contradicts the recent. It contradicts the recent rezoning of the Par Troy Meadows block lots. And in the Rutgers study of Christopher Abrothia.
30 seconds.
He mentions Troy Meadows Natural Area is the final recipient of the waters of the Troy Brook before entering the Whippany River. Total suspended solids need to be reduced to protect important habitat and to keep the integrity of the waterways. Runoff from the highways, along with runoff from upstream high-density developments, contributes to the sediment loading of the Troy Brook Natural Area. Address, Mr. Abrothia's report, Chapter 3, address loss of biodiversity, item 5, area of the Water View office complex.
Sir. Thank you.
Could you give whatever you're going to, could you give the copy to the clerk?
There's six copies there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Curtis Hardenberg, how are you guys? Everybody good?
Steve, your address, sir.
85 Red Gate Road. Mr. Anglissino, just one question. Where you said they could grade beyond that line, if we're buying that property, why would we allow them to grade beyond that line? It wouldn't make sense.
I'll address your questions at the end of your.
At the end?
Good.
The other thing is, it seems to me like Bellmead's hanging a carrot over us. All of a sudden, we're talking about settlements. The council voted not to do it. Why are we worried about doing a settlement on something that everybody seemed to be against? The traffic issue is still there. Where they build their driveways is not shown on here, even if they were to try to redo it. You still have all the offices right there with thousands of cars coming down Water View. To make a settlement now doesn't make sense because we voted against it, and all of the other issues are still out there. The only issue that's not out there now is the residential, and impeding on people's property. All of the other issues are still there. Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would encourage the council, as we've already discussed, not to make any comments regarding the prospect of a settlement or the litigation, because now would not be the appropriate time to do that. In terms of the grading easement, it would make sense to do that from a runoff and soil control perspective, and that's the reason why there is the possibility for that.
Why would we allow them to do it on our property if we're buying it? If we're buying it as open space, why would we allow one bulldozer to take one tree down on our open space property? That would not make sense at all.
Well, I can tell you that it is commonplace for grading easements to be granted in connection with open space acquisitions. That is certainly not a novel concept, but again, there would be no structures permitted in that area.
They shouldn't be allowed to take one tree down, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. No, sir, you can't just yell out from the public like that.
Well, my question hasn't been answered.
I believe his question was answered correctly.
I believe it was.
I didn't expect to be up here. Roy Masmer, 100.
I think in fairness to Mr. Homiak, there was a question in regards to the prospect of additional rezoning of the property, and I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment on that at this time, unless we want another litigation.
Roy Masmer, 100, on the drive. Just one quick question, but I see, it also goes to the gentleman here from Mountain Lakes, but, Mr. Mayor, last week I brought up the question, and you said that you were going to pursue it. Have you had a chance this past week? Is Mountain Lakes going to contribute any money?
I'm going to pursue it because I think the borough of Mountain Lakes should have a stake in it as well. I don't know how much open space money they have, but whatever they have, we discuss if they should also contribute to this property as well. A lot of residents want to come up and spend Parsippany's money, and it's time for Mountain Lakes to start spending their money on this property as well.
Okay, and this money, the property we're talking about, 9.2 acres, 9.3 acres, how much between, right now, forgetting about Mountain Lakes, our money was $600,000 and 2 points?
700.
About, what's the total?
We're guesstimating that the municipal component would be approximately $700,000. We have $722,000 and change available in unused green acres funds, which should be available. That roughly comports with a 20% local contribution that the committee typically requires, so, that's what the application will provide for.
So 9 acres into approximately $4 million. So it's less than $500,000 an acre, which, okay, I'm just trying.
The application is going to be for 3.5 million dollars.
But then we give 20%.
No, it's the 20% of the 3.5, so, that's actually a very good point. So you're applying for 3.5 million. You don't get 3.5 million, you get 3.5 million less your contribution.
Oh, okay, all right. This week you'll be able to call Mountain Lakes?
I have a letter drafted up, send it out to.
I guess I could open that, right, John? Mr. Anglissino, I could just go to Mountain Lakes tomorrow and open what their open space money is, right?
Please do, Mr. Masmer.
I don't want to see a bill now, okay?
You won't get any complaints from me.
Nancy Geter, 41 Lake Drive. And I'm going to go through this rather quickly because I only have three minutes, so, apparently, if we are not capable of knowing anything about settlement discussions and any concepts of what might be done with 2/3 of the property, I think we need to really focus on this application before you, right now, which is simply to apply for open space funds. The number of 9.26 in applying for the open space funds, 9.2 acres, seems incredibly arbitrary to me, but when I look, I see, in fact, if you look at those maps that were handed out to you by Ron Owens, you'll see that if you put a 300-foot buffer behind Forest Drive, you don't even really get a good 200-foot buffer along Intervale Road. Now, under POD zoning, we have that already. So what are we gaining here? Because we don't, you won't tell us what's happening with the other 2/3s of the property, so let's make sure we're not giving up more than we have to on this 1/3, less than 1/3 piece of property. We already have those buffers under POD. And in fact, there's nothing, nothing that prevents any of you from applying for more open space funding than just that little itty-bitty piece. And let me give you just a little analogy, okay? Let's suppose your neighbor's got a car and wants to sell it, all right? So you go over, you say, "Yeah, I'm interested in your car," and, "Oh, I see there's a trailer attached to it, I kind of like the trailer, too." Are you willing to sell that? "Well, I don't really know, maybe, but, you know, I'm interested in selling you the car." "Okay, good. I don't have the cash on me, let me go to the bank." All right, so you go to the bank, you go get a line of credit. Are you going to get a line of credit just for the car? Or are you going to get it for the car and the trailer because you really want the car and the trailer? All right? So you don't have, you're not stuck just trying to get that little itty-bitty piece of your less than 1/3 funding. Go for more than that, you've got more cash in your pocket, you can go back and you can discuss rezoning, if that's what you're going to do, with some type of backing behind you. Otherwise, you're really stuck. You have no other way to go with it. So that's my real big problem with your 9.2 acres. I think it's great, we all would like to see an end to this, we'd all like to see this resolved, we're all getting real tired of it. We've all put hearts and souls into this, and by the way, we did get 100% POD. We won. So if we're going to give it up, let's make sure we're giving it up for something really worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Anglissino, I have a question. Our resident brings up a very good point. If we have already a 300-foot buffer zone in the POD, what does that translate into acreage out of the 9.26 acres?
Well, I'm not sure what that calculation would be, but if you're going from Forest Drive, you have a 409-foot buffer under what is proposed. It would be 309 to the easement line, and then another 100 feet. So from Forest Drive, you're talking about a 409-foot buffer to the subdivision line, and from Intervale, it's 107 feet. Which is increased from what I think even the proposal was back then, and from what the planner has advised, that it protects the ridge and the trees.
Okay, yeah, I'm trying to equate how many acres we're actually buying that we already would have had as an easement under POD zoning.
Well, you wouldn't have an easement on the POD zone.
Or a septic.
There was a buffer on the POD zone of, my recollection is, that there was a buffer of 200 feet from, under existing zoning, from Forest Drive. So that has been more than doubled in terms of the buffer.
Right.
And moreover, also, well, that's all I'll say about that.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Margaret Gossett, and I live at 24 Glen Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Parsippany has chosen to participate in COA in the past. Compared to other towns that have not participated, Parsippany stands a better chance of protecting themselves from the builder's threat. Parsippany has exceeded the Round 2 obligations that can be legally applied to Round 3, whatever those rules may be. Parsippany has been a poster child for good COA land use planning. Regardless of what happens to Water View, there is an absolute way to protect the town from the COA's builder's remedy threat. In a builder's remedy lawsuit, municipalities lose their ability to choose where and how affordable housing will be provided, and the development may conflict with the municipality's master plan. Municipalities that are not participating in the COA process run the risk of being sued for exclusionary zoning and forced into a builder's remedy lawsuit. Even though the affordable housing obligation is mandatory under the Constitution, participation in the COA process is voluntary. Parsippany has chosen to participate in COA in the past. It will be easier and less costly to meet both affordable housing and other goals of the municipality, such as open space efforts when participating voluntarily through COA. On June 3 of 2010, the Parsippany Planning Board submitted a Round 3 COA plan that was certified by the state. Parsippany has been very good stewards, providing low-income housing obligations in the past. Once the new Round 3 rules are adopted in November, it is critically important that a new Round 3 plan for certification is submitted to COA. By submitting a new Round 3 plan for certification after the rules are finalized, Parsippany will be protected from the builder's remedy. And I just wanted to submit to the clerk, just, I have the first three pages of the plan that was submitted by the planning board, submitted to the state in 2010. And the plan was written by Ed.
Snikus.
Ed Snikus. And it was a really good plan. You guys should be really proud of yourselves. You have, like I said, you have excess obligations that you've met that can be applied to Round 3, and you have a clear plan for zoning of properties around the municipality, and that really protects you from any threat of rezoning of even Water View for low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Davy Willens, 8 Jamaica. I've come up here, interestingly, from a perspective of being a recipient and benefactor of the fine negotiation this township has been able to have with the county in getting open space historic preservation funding and green acres money for one of the great treasures of National Historic Landmark called Craftsmen Farms. Having said that, I have two questions. Right now, we have $720,000 in our open space money. Is that for this year?
No, what I said was, there's $720,000 in unused green acres funds, not just from this year, that were just unused from previous years that are so-called in the bank, if you will, that can be utilized for this purpose.
And if it's taken from the bank, when will it be redeposited, or how is that money redeposited?
Well, that money would not be redeposited. That is monies, again, in unused green acre funds that can be used for, you know, open space purposes, at the discretion of the governing body.
Thank you. My point being is, through good discipline, we have been able to accrue a $720,000 open space fund, right? Now, we're going to spend $700,000 of that, all of it, without a plan to rebuild it, okay, for the acquisition of some open space, with no definition of how that property is going to be used. I just question why the township.
Yeah, that's not true. The township has.
That's what I thought it hurt.
Yeah, no, the township has a separate open space fund.
I think I understand.
That fund has in excess of $5 million in it, and the voters of Parsippany had approved a plan years ago.
Yes.
In which that fund would be replenished each year through the open space tax.
Yes, that's my understanding.
So Parsippany is not, you know, just taking all of its open space money if it approves its application and putting it here, to the contrary. This is, this is not money from the Parsippany Open Space Trust Fund, this is money, unused green acres money from the state that Parsippany has that can be used for this purpose. Doesn't affect the $5 million in open space funding that Parsippany has otherwise accrued, and doesn't affect the fact that Parsippany will continue to collect monies for open space purposes pursuant to the open space tax, which was approved by the voters.
I think I understand that, okay? Again, back to the point. 700 of the 720 is being allocated, right? Of that, that means to me, okay, that we are making a decision to use that valuable resource we accrued for this purchase because there's nothing else better for us to do with it. That's my question, and I'm just concerned about that, okay? And again, not second guessing all the things.
It's not that there's nothing better to do with it, if I may add. We have an inventory, open space inventory list, as you know, Davy, and there are other projects that we might pursue in the future.
Right.
Right now, we don't know what all those projects are, but stuff is, you know, the thing is, I guess if you wanted to get replenished green acres, you'd have to reapply for a grant. I think that would be the only way to do it. But we have, now, once again, if there's a project, that's when we would reapply for it.
And I'd like to make a further point. $721,000 that they're talking about is green acres money, again, separate, as the mayor said. Just recently, about two weeks ago, only three weeks ago, maybe, as recent as that, the state of New Jersey finally has started again the state monies that are coming. We can still apply for that money up until July 31st, but before we can apply for that money, we can't say that we have this money there. So, and that's right away how you'll be able to replenish it, because that's what we want to do, you know, so therefore, it's not an instant, because there's no guarantees, but that's what, that's what the vision is, to certainly apply for the state funding that has finally been coming back to us again, and it's due on the.
That's good news, because I have to dry it up for a few, right?
Yes, it has, it did, and I was.
I didn't know that Wells back home.
Yes, I was thrilled to see it, so I just wanted to let you know that.
But for all the other properties the town already owns under green acres, i.e. the Noel Country Club, of which I'm on the advisory committee, would any of those funds be available to be utilized for any projects on those green acre spaces that the town already owns? Just a question. Thank you.
Sir, you already, you already spoke.
I have one question.
I can't let you come back up again.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Sorry.
Good evening. Gretchen Fry, 74 Ball Road, Mountain Lakes, and a friend of Parsippany residents. I'm concerned that, to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said, that we're not pursuing the notion of going for 100% here. As Ms. Sendman just illuminated, I, you eliminated me, I didn't, it's hard to follow with all these open space and the trust funds, the sequence. We have an opportunity, I think, to really go for this. I appreciate and applaud that you guys have come up with this 9.26 acres to go for, but why not go for it all? Why not now? Why not now, as a negotiating ploy, if only that? Cover your ears, RD Realty, but if you get it, then you have more to bargain with when RD Realty or the next guy comes after you. You've, you've, you've got it. You've got at least the majority of it. So I do hope that you will consider going for more, because now is the time. Thank you.
Well, again, one of the questions in the, in the application pertains to the interest that you have in the property. And, you know, again, as I indicated in my remarks, one of the basics, basic terms that could form the basis of an agreement is a negotiated price for a negotiated specific piece of property, which forms the basis to make the application. If you just go in and apply for funding on property that you have no interest in at all, then that application is, you're not meeting the requirements of the application, and that application will likely not be looked favorably upon. So there has to be a basis for an interest in the property, and that's the piece that perhaps, you know, was missing.
Good evening. Jerry Manning, Rainbow Lakes. I'd probably be the lone voice in the wilderness here, but I'm in favor of this proposal. And I'll tell you why. If Mountain Lakes is so opposed to anything that we do in this town, I suggest that any time they show up from day on, come down here with suitcases full of money, and buy the property. Otherwise, leave us alone. It's ours, and we will do with it what we damn well please. Thank you very much.
Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. DePiro. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Our 2014-082 Resolution Township Council Township Parsippany Troy Hills authorize an application to Morris County Preservation Trust for the acquisition of portion of property identified as Block 421, Lot 29, in fronting on Intervale Road.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, segmented by Mr. DePiro. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
No.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
This time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
This time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
This time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
This time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
No.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
This time, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Good evening. Long night. Two things. First, I want to thank you very much for putting the resolution opposing the pilgrim pipeline on the agenda for tonight. I will thank you in advance for passing it, but in that vein, if there is any questions or any issues that would prevent you from voting for it, I would be happy to address them if I possibly could.
Mr. Dolsky, can you just provide your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ken Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive. The, I just want to also state, and I may have mentioned this before relative to pilgrim pipeline, that this is far more important than just a Parsippany statement regarding this. This is part of a environmental coalition strategy to line up all the municipalities to fight this, because that appears to be the most effective way to do it, that you have a lot more control over oil pipelines than you do over power lines. So thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing that it's passed. Second thing, talking about power lines. At the agenda meeting, we talked about a resolution to ask JCP&L to take the alternate route through the woodlands, and I understood that it was going to be on the agenda. I know that it was under attorney review and approval this morning, and then it disappeared from the agenda, so I'd like to understand what happened to it.
All I can say is, as we had discussed at our last meeting, we were putting the pipeline on the agenda for tonight, but the JCP&L power lines, we were tabling for further discussion to get more information and do our due diligence on that before we put it on the agenda for tonight.
All right, well, A, I don't see the linkage between the two. Second, the power line issue has been around since January, February. What more could you possibly be looking for on that?
Well, at this time, the council as a whole felt it was, we had enough information in reference to the pipeline to move forward on that, and right now, with the JCP&L lines, we're still acquiring as much information, possible routes, et cetera, as we can right now.
The problem with that approach is JCP&L is close to making a decision now, and we have 65 homes that are negatively affected, seriously affected by the route that they're proposing, the initial route. And yet, this council has taken no steps to take any official action on either route. Now, I think this is a serious mistake. I think you're abandoning the 65 homes. There's no, there's no reason why you can't take more than one approach, okay? And passing this resolution, at least supporting alternate route, and not the route they're taking now that are going to devastate 65 homes, is one approach. If you want to take a second approach, put the, put the power lines underground, that's fine, but at least do something. Right now, this council has done nothing, and you've tabled a resolution near the deadline of JCP&L's decision.
Also, as of legal advice, that further had to be looked at, so that's another reason why it was not on the agenda for tonight.
Well, we can certainly work with, with Mr. DePiro to put a resolution together and circulate it among the council members for consideration, and we need some input from some of the council members, because obviously there are, you know, policy decisions that would have to be made. We could certainly do that for the next meeting, that's not a problem.
Well, as Mr. DePiro points out, JCP&L is going to make a decision, probably in July, I was told, well, a few weeks ago, that it would be six to eight weeks, and roughly July.
So what's, what's meeting?
July 8th.
15th. When, when July 8th?
So July 8th is the agenda meeting. Certainly have something circulated well in advance of that.
And from my understanding, wasn't the dialogue that we had last week, Mr. DePiro, or maybe two weeks ago, was based on DEP's decision on, you know, where those lines were to go? Wasn't, there was issues in regards to the environmental?
No, there was no, I don't, I don't know of any environmental...
Did we discuss some?
The issue was, it was discussed that one route would affect 50 to 60 homes. Mr. DePiro stated that the other route would only affect three homes.
Yeah, but if I...
But we wanted to know exactly where and what, where it would go.
No, I understand that, but I thought when we were discussing this, you know, having dialogue back and forth with all the council members, that the one area that, which could be the alternative area, alternate area, would be on wetlands, and that was an issue dealing with environmental reasons. So I'm pretty sure that was brought up two weeks ago.
Something was discussed with that.
So that was, I had concerns about that, because you're going to, I thought they were going to make the ultimate decision. If it was going to affect, you know, the wetlands, the environment, you know, how much say do we really have then? That was a concern of mine.
I think, and I remember the conversation.
Yeah, because we're going back and forth.
Conversation would be that if it had to go through wetlands, the township wouldn't make the decision on if it would be approved, the DEP would.
Yeah, because we're talking about Monville and Parsippany. So I remember us having dialogue on that, and I thought DEP would have a major...
Okay, but in the short term, DEP's not going to do anything.
Right. Well, I don't know that.
Well, nobody's asking them to do anything. Nobody submit, is submitting anything to the DEP. In fact, when, when JCP&L files, they're first going to file with the BPU. BPU is going to look at it, and they're going to make their decision as to whether they approve it or not, and then JCP&L will go for permitting with the DEP. So we're talking like a year down the road or more.
All this resolution would have done was requested that JCP&L look at an alternate route. That's it. The DEP issue is an issue they have to address if they decide on the alternate route. They have to address the DEP. All we were asking them to do was look at an alternate route.
This is DePiro, again, I respect what you're saying, but my understanding, based on that, you know, council meeting that we had two weeks ago, that had some major concerns about it. So again, I don't have a problem moving forward, but again, I don't want to affect anybody or even the environment. So needless to say, I was only briefed on only a portion of what was being said here. So my answer that I'm getting now about the DEP, I did not hear those answers two weeks ago. And we could play back the tape if we have to, so those are certain...
I think, I think the resolution here is have the council, the township attorney draft up the resolution, you know, and you guys look it over and see what you agree with, what you don't agree with.
Okay.
Sir, let me just state for the record that I am completely against, I don't want to see any of our residents. I mean, I just cannot believe what they're looking to do behind your houses. I don't want to see any of our residents affected by this, so I'm looking for, you know, if there was some magical way to get a third route where there's going to be no residents affected, you know, that's, that's what I want to see.
I want to see too, you've got, you've got a month. It's not going to happen. Unless you are magicians, that is just out of the question. It's not feasible. We are looking at the alternate route, because that is the most feasible way of minimizing the harm. That's, I sent you guys, I gave you letters back in, let's say, February. They had maps. It had a whole description of what the situation was. It had all the maps that you are asking for now. You had it in your hand. And now we're sitting here saying, we don't know what the routes are, we don't know whether the DEP is involved or not. It described the process that you had to go through. The process is on the JCP&L site. This all should have been old news, old information, and, you know, well-established information. There's no, nothing hidden here, and you could have made a decision.
What I'd like to address, Mr. Dolsky, is two things. One is, when the item first came up in discussion, when you brought it to our attention, we had asked each other on council to meet with JCP&L. Respectfully, Mr. DePiro and myself have volunteered to meet with JCP&L to educate us further on the topic. To my surprise, Mr. DePiro met with the mayor and a couple of representatives of JCP&L and excluded me from that meeting. So I was not aware of it. Unfortunately, I did speak to Mr. DePiro last week, and he said it was a meeting call the day before at 10 o'clock, and it didn't give prior notification to anybody. So out of respect for that, I think the residents need to be more informed about it as well, that are on the other side of the power line as well. One of the things in your letter that I read was the spirit of the freeholders adopting an ordinance. When the freeholders, you had indicated, had the spirit of, I guess, Freehold Director, Mr. Mastelangelo, having a meeting for the public and bringing everybody together, and in the spirit of working together, not only with Parsippany, but also with Monville, and also to give additional power to Parsippany rather than just giving 100% power to Monville. I'm in agreement with the freeholders. You know, I believe that we should work together, and I believe that the county should have a meeting, and we should have further support from the county as well. So in the spirit of reviewing everything that was put in front of me, I believe we should have that meeting immediately if time is of the essence.
Hey, look, I have no control over that.
I'll respond to that.
I don't think the freeholders are going to call for it. It's up to the townships to take him up on his offer. That's the way I understood it.
I received, I received a phone call from the business administrator of Morris County that they were going to set up a meeting, and they haven't set one up yet. But as you're aware, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Councilman DePiro with Mountain Lakes Mayor and a council member, I think a council, no, the business administrator with regards to, you know, not negotiating, but speaking. Yeah, Monville, I mean, like, Mountain Lakes has been on, they're going to buy that property too. So, you know, it's, we've been working on it and stuff like that, and of course, you know, so far, to be honest with you, the business administrator for Monville seemed very optimistic. He was, you know, he wanted to really get together with Parsippany. But that being said, they also have, of course, they want a different route as well.
We have our issues, you know, there's many sides to this. It's complicated.
There is. Yeah, absolutely.
The homeowners understand it, because I understand it, okay? I've tried to educate everybody here. I honest to God, just don't think it's taken. You know, whether you went to a meeting or not, you know, we know what the issues are. We have the maps. It's, it's, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out, and I wish we, we could have done what we needed to do and been ready to move on this. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I just want to...
Time's up.
So he knows time's up. Well, I just want to, because I just, you know, my concern is too, is, and I have no problem, and I agree with Council President, you know, obviously Karifi and the efforts that everybody's putting in along with the mayor, is that we put a resolution together, and I have no problem with that in any way, shape, or form, supporting, you know, everybody that's being affected by this. But I think at the end of the day, they're going to put those lines where they want. It seems to be, based on the conversation that we had two weeks ago in here, and that's where I picked up on the environmental issues, and I'm thinking to myself, maybe we might get lucky, and it won't happen. But at the end of the day, they're going to make up their minds, and we're going to be with our hands tied to a degree. I mean, that's what it seems to me.
Well, they have the total control. All I can, all I can say is...
I don't want to think that we're being lazy not wanting to do something for you.
If it were close, and resolutions, one way or the other could help, it might make a difference. But you're right. JCP&L is going to do what's best for JCP&L.
Because I know that we had that...
Okay, thank you.
I just want to concur what you said, because the mayor and I spoke about this with the prevention of the 200-foot poles that are in Shoprite that are coming through with the Susquehanna line, and as the mayor had indicated, is that he worked hard to prevent them, but at the end of the day, they decided so it was a futile effort.
Yeah. You can...
Where are we?
I will confer with, with Councilman DePiro and circulate resolutions, unless there's policy direction from the council now. If you want a resolution to support the alternative route, we can do that. If there's some divergence of opinion, then we can circulate a resolution as a starting point. Folks can provide me with whatever comments they have, and we have between now and at least July 8th to hopefully get a resolution that is supported.
Madam Clerk, can we arrange for a meeting with the Freehold Director, Thomas Langelo, with the public, as the county had indicated? Can we arrange that? Can you reach out to the county, please, and let's have a public meeting?
A joint meeting?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I am here to bring my two matters as going on builders and contractor.
Please just state your name and address.
Dolly Patel, 28 Cherokee Lake. When bid was given, awarded to the contractor, how come other homeowners are back in their home? My contract was signed by last June and this June here. All year is gone, house is not done. Neighbor's been complaining, when we going to clean this mess? It's not my mess, it's township's mess. They hired the contractor and work is not done yet. So many emails, phone calls, been in personally in engineering department, no response.
Dolly Patel, 28 Cherokee, Lake Hiwatha. When bid was given, awarded to the contractor, how come other homeowners are back in their home? My contract was signed by last June and this June here. All year is gone. House is not done. Neighbor's been complaining, when we going to clean this mess? It's not my mess. It's township mess. They hire the contractor and work is not done yet. So many emails, phone calls, been in personally in engineering department, no response. Thursday, Friday, they get prepaid and here I'm working hard, they are getting prepaid. Whenever you go, call them, email them, no response. Oh, Ms. Patel, next Monday they will start. Which next Monday? From April, I'm hearing same thing. So what's going on? When they got the one sound choice LLC got the contract, how come he finished the neighborhood homes? He elevated and he's gone and the other contractor got, he's gone. What's the Cruz Control is doing? So why I am paying that money, the 25% to the FEMA when my job, my housework is not done?
What's your address?
28 Cherokee Avenue. And he, I'm sorry. His board says another quality job done by Cruz Control. His board should be saying opposite, poor quality job. I've been there. Email went out, nothing I heard back. I'm so surprised. I thought they should be reporting to you everything. Cruz Control. And whenever I see him, whenever engineering called to him, he calls my husband or myself, oh, why did you complain about me? Yes, we will complain because we pay 25%, which we don't have it. Our house got depreciated, the value. I cannot go to the bank and tell them, hey, reassess my house or give me home equity or nothing. The mortgage is upside down, the value. And second thing, when the, again, the water issue, you saw me last time. I got the, I pay my bill and I got another bill saying they're going to shut off my notice yesterday. I called them. They say, oh, Ms. Patel, this is the disconnection fee, $150. So the payment you made it, it went towards your, that penalty and interest. First of all, how many time you going to disconnect that property water and going to keep charging us? So that should be a part of that job which Cruz is doing it. So how many more times you going to let us suffer? Three years, is it not enough for us to pay taxes, mortgage and the rent? That's all I want to answer from you guys back. Thank you.
With regards to the water, because I wasn't at one of the meetings and I forget 100 and something dollars that was owed by the homeowner. As you know, state law does not allow for us to just forgive fees. Can't do it. We do it once, we have to do it for everybody. So the whole situation with the water, and that the mayor ran out the back door when this resident came is first of all, not true. I didn't run out the back door. I was going to see the business administrator. But I told the homeowner that I would love to forgive it if I could, but the township can't do that. You know, many, you know, many times we have a homeowner come late with a tax payment, interest accrues. State law doesn't allow us to forgive those, those types of fees. We can't do it. The council can't do it by a resolution. So those are things that our hands are tied. Now with regards to this property, this is the first I'm hearing of this and usually in situations like this, the township engineer does notify me. So I will speak to the township engineer tomorrow. I'm just sending it to the council members and see what's going on with this property and what's going on with the contractor. But when it comes to fees, you know what? If you use the water, there's not much you can do and we have, we can't forgive fees.
Mayor, can you email us just to see what the, the outcome was on that?
Right, I will.
I want to address you another thing. The way you are talking about the behavior of the fee, when I came and I was, I was billed that bill and I was told, oh, you have to call to shut off the water. So when I shut off the water, then why didn't show up my, on that year bill, 2011? Why showing up on this year bill?
That I'll find out, but the fee that you were talking about, I told you, Ms. Patel, that it cannot, Mrs. Patel, cannot be forgiven. I wish we could forgive.
I was informed by Water Department, this $100, $150 is a disconnection fee.
Well, there's an ordinance. We have to go by what the ordinance says. So if there's a disconnection fee, I have to, I have to look at the ordinance.
Okay. And you can waive the Knoll Country Club fee by state law, not the homeowner.
I can what?
For the Knoll Country Club, $32,000, but not for the homeowners. That's the state law say. That's the recreation. This is roof over.
We can't do it.
Okay.
And you know that, Mrs. Patel. We've had that discussion. And of course, you know, you know, I can have the same discussion with you and since two, two years we've been discussing it. And of course, when two years goes on, interest accrues.
I have a question.
Please state your name and address.
In a car, if you may, 4 pound load.
You can talk, you can do it after.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm, I'm here is for the, I just heard about that, I live right by the wetland area and I just heard that there will be power lines there or there are proposals for that. Or I want to tell you that I'm concerned with that. It's a news to me. I'm concerned for my family, for the, I'm concerned that the, my property value will go down. I definitely, I mean, I, I want to know if you guys doing everything possible to prevent the power line going through the wetland. That will be, it will be, I mean, I'm sure it will increase the flooding. We already get flooded. It's, it's going to ruin all the trees there, the environment and, and not to mention that all those houses, there are a lot of houses there, there are a lot of families. I don't want my kids to get cancer or any other disease. So if you have, I mean, I heard that the town can't do anything. I'm not sure if the town can do anything. I mean, you guys need to make sure that you can do everything possible to prevent those power lines go through our houses. My house is right by the wetland. You know, I mean, it's, that power line is going to be right by, on top of my house. When somebody said we can't, I mean, the, the power company will decide and just go with it, I mean, can't you guys do anything?
Well, here's, here's what I can say to you, sir. We would love, the council would love to stop every line that comes through if we could. When I first became the mayor in 2010, my first two weeks in office had to do with the PSCNG lines coming through and those are the 200-foot towers you're talking about. And the township attorney can attest to this. We fought that tooth and nail. I, I, I mean, I met with 16 other mayors and once I got down to the Board of Public Utilities, it was over that quick. Because they decide and once they decide, it's, and if I'm wrong, township, township, it's virtually, it's a losing battle.
No, the mayor is exactly correct. The township council and the mayor do not have jurisdiction over the application. The Board of Public Utilities does. And then as Mr. Dolski said correctly, there's permitting issues before other applicable state agencies. All the governing body can do is, is pass a resolution expressing an opinion. And, you know, the hope is, is that the Board of Public Utilities will consider the opinions expressed by the public and the public's representatives in making their determination. So there's, there's really very limited action that can be taken by the township. But certainly, you know, there will be consideration of, of a resolution to express their view.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Roy, Master, 10 Drummond Drive. It's been a pretty long and intense night, but a lot, a lot of things went over. Just want to share you with something to inject a little, not levity. You know, the state assembly passed last day, 78 to 0, about only 2% increase for police officers and firemen. It's too bad they didn't pass, I'm sorry?
Arbitration?
Yeah, the arbitration. It's too bad they didn't pass a law where they can only get a 2% increase on their political contributions. That would be pretty good. But they try to butter their bread on both sides. What I want to go over tonight was, I'm more confused now with the insurance, to be honest with you. I'm not going to dwell on that tonight. Next week I'll be, I'll have a bunch of questions for that. But, you know, you say that we don't pay Ryan Graham, but it seems like it's always Ryan Graham here before it was Ada who did an excellent job. And now Ryan Graham's the one that gets up here and tries to justify the wellness program and everything else, but yet we don't see a reduction in our fees. And we are self-insured and a lot of people did not know we were self-insured with health insurance. So that's got to be looked into. His fee, whoever pays it, directly, indirectly. The thing I want to cover here tonight, but before I get to it, I do want to say one other thing. Mayor, last week I asked you for a meeting so we could get together and talk about that occupancy situation because your office is going to be inundated at the end of July and August. And I'd be willing to sit in that office and take all the phone calls.
I wanted to hire somebody else.
I'm not asking you paid because I don't want to go into the pension program. I don't need it. But, but really it's, and I, the, the other fellow residents who have given me a lot of constructive input, we have a list of about 20 things we'd like to discuss with you now that we have Ellen on board and with Paula. Who, who possibly could be hired? I think you're going to like my recommendation with this, but tonight's not my time. What I want to talk about, Ellen, this is more directly to it. It's not a personal confrontation with you or a personal slight. I will say this, I have checked with a number of people throughout the state. You are one of the few people I've ever checked on as a state, as a, as a municipal employee who come highly recommended, everybody I spoke to. But with that said, the law is the law. Mayor Barberio was the sitting councilman when Ann Grassi, John Cicero, the mayor, Councilman Barberio at the time, John Fox and Mike DiPiero passed this ordinance, which is chapter 57, that says exempt from this article, this is regarding the car, of course, our emergency service personnel who rely upon authorized emergency vehicles for health, safety, et cetera. Because I only get five minutes, I got to go fast. Well, if that's the case, then we should be giving a car out to everybody who works in DPW because they plow our streets. Don't they have to get here? Shouldn't they have four-wheel drive vehicles? Now, I'm not trying to be a wise guy here or be sarcastic, but the law is the law. It was passed, like I said, two, three meetings ago for fiscal responsibility because whoever mayor it was, it got out of hand with the cars. Ellen does not need a car. She does not need a car. Doesn't matter if she lives five miles away or 50 miles away. There's plenty of vehicles here. If we know it's going to snow and the mayor feels it's so important that the B A be here, she doesn't have a CDL license, at least I don't think she does, so she's not going to get on a plow truck or, or plow, that then take home one of the four-wheel vehicles. But in the meantime, she should not have a car. This law was passed about seven years ago, six years ago, whatever it was, doesn't matter. And it's, it was, you know, it's very few times I ever got up here and I complimented Ann Grassi, but I'm complimenting her on this and John Cicero. And it fell, like I said before, the other three council people passed this ordinance. Regarding Ellen's salary and everything else, okay, if that's, that's what it is, that's what it is. But the car should not be a perk. It's got to stop not only in this town, but throughout the state. So I expect you guys to call to him tomorrow, okay? How do you say his name? Prieto? And that's a guy with him and his wife collecting $300,000 a year from the taxpayers of New Jersey. He's got three jobs and she's got a state job, a municipal job. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
I had something here that I don't bring up because we're talking about all these other things. But did anything ever become of my contentions about the Knoll Gardens, their garbage containers being exposed to the elements, not having a, an enclosure to prevent that garbage from, from spreading? We were talking about the leaves and the, the housing authority, to me, really doesn't seem to enforce the, the ordinances concerning housing and their garbage and recycling and how much recycling is being done and, and the whole thing with the apartment complexes in this town and their garbage. But a simple thing like an ordinance to have an enclosure, if you drive along Knoll Road, you could see them, see them all and depending on who's taking out the garbage and who's emptying the garbage, there's, there's quite a bit of that that gets spread around in the, on their property and on the town property there right across from the golf course. So I haven't heard anything about, you know, whether any action would take place. And one final thing about the water view, I'm going to mention a dirty word, Highlands. But really, we should take our position here as being part of the Highlands more seriously. And water is a critical issue. And using affordable housing as an excuse or tax ratables as a, an excuse to allow retail where there should be, like I said, recharge or open space, it's just, those, those things like that are not, they're frivolous arguments and they're not, they really literally shouldn't hold any water. They're, they're not strong arguments. I believe Mr. Nelson brought out the fact that if this property was going full force, every homeowner in the town at the most could expect to receive a $6 a year annual tax reduction? Is that worth it for the quality of life in the town to go down to help a private developer? Put a private developer, make unreasonable profit at the expense of the community? That's not, you know, we just shouldn't allow ourselves to even think that way. Because if we're only getting $6 a year, then it sounds like somebody's getting money somewhere else down the line in some fashion or form and it's not the community. All right, thanks.
Nick, real quick, regards to Knoll Garden Apartments, the garbage ones disposed over there, taken out, is it separate cans or are they going to one big dumpster?
They're going to a dumpster.
It's private haulers.
Yeah, but, you know, depending on the day.
They still have to, they still have to.
They're not maintaining it?
They have to maintain it still.
Is there a possibility that we could get on?
Yeah, this is just, and this is, Nick, this is the first I'm hearing about it from you because.
Oh, I told you.
Well, you send 100 emails, so I got to sort.
Well, I know. You must have me deleted at this.
Actually, no, I'm getting educated.
Now, we'll, we'll get with the mayor to follow up on that because it's, it's a beautiful area down there. It's, it, I, I lived there for five years when I first entered the town and I could see how that could get really out on Beverlywick Road there, you know, very easily. It's towards the back, towards the.
Yeah, right there on, on the, what is it? Knoll Road, right?
Knoll Road, yeah. And it's, it's blown out on the roadway?
Yeah, depending on what time, it, it varies, but it's, but it's, they're exposed to the elements. When I was on the tenants association in Bloomfield, we got the apartment complexes in Bloomfield, a couple, the one I was living in at the time, we got them where we passed an ordinance, say how to put fences around their garbage containers because the park was right there, Clark's Pond was right there and their garbage was going, you know, right out.
I'll take it right over there also because I'm, I'm concerned about that. We'll go with the mayor.
Nick, your time's up, but I just want to state that the business administrators indicating that they are addressing that situation.
Great. All right, okay. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
John McMahon, Beloxford Drive, off of Edwards Road. This was left on my mailbox along with a whole bunch of other mailboxes on our street and it's encouraging me to support the preferred route rebuild of the Jersey Central line as opposed to the alternate segment. And I guess for me, that makes sense. I don't know too much about it. I heard somebody come up here and mentioned so many homes would be affected one way and three homes would be affected the other way. Doesn't sound quite right, but that's a position someone else took. I guess I don't understand why such a, to me, a big issue winds up on my letterbox. It's really the first time I've heard of the issue that there was an alternate route or a preferred route. I have read about the project and knew they were going to come through Parsippany. At the time I read about it, it didn't seem like it would impact me, so I guess I didn't pay too much attention to it. But, so now I'm paying attention, but it winds up on my letterbox and there's no signature and I guess I would like to know who put it there. I don't suppose anybody in the council would know, but if you did, I'd just like curiosity, who went to the trouble of printing these papers and passing them around? And it sounds like from what I heard tonight, there's not much you can do about it or I can do about it. But I guess I'd like to learn more about it. So if somebody does know something about it, I'd like to be more informed on it.
Can you possibly leave a copy of that with the clerk so we could see what that looks like? Thank you, sir.
When did you, when did you receive it? Matter of fact, I saw it Monday. I looked at it and frankly, I came up here and it was a building department. It was strange. I looked at the time and not the date. This is what was handed out to the council. Same thing that I have on my desk, so. I didn't hand it out, so I, I.
That's what we have in our packets here?
I guess you don't have a responsibility to tell me that someone's going to build a power line.
We have that, right?
Well, we don't, nothing we don't have a responsibility. Nice to have you, that's something we've been going on.
Oh, okay.
Well, we don't know if this.
Okay.
Basically same way as.
I don't have to sign again, right? Nancy Snyder, 226 North Beverlywick Road. A little off the beaten path from what you've been hearing. Good evening. I'd like to speak to you regarding this ugly, bright yellow hot dog stand, truck roaming around, taking up regular residency at the Food Town parking lot in Lake Hiwatha. Now, the roving business is nothing short of a blight in this committee, especially smacking in the face of the beautification that's been done in the Lake Hiwatha Business District that includes but not limited to paving stones and nice curbing and vintage lighting and all that stuff. So the council, along with the zoning counterparts, because I don't think I can attend the zoning So the council, along with the zoning counterparts, because I don't think I can attend the zoning meeting tomorrow, but nonetheless, you need to work collaboratively to tighten up or enforce what's on the books. We can't have these rolling hot dog dispensers and fly-by-night businesses taking up residence on properties just because the property owner, the commercial property owner says they can do so. Just pitch up a tent and do business. Additionally, more needs to be done to prevent commercial parking lots and properties from being used as short-term and long-term storage site for tractor-trailers. If I can give this to the author, so I can spread it around, I will, yes. The tractor-trailers and the commercial vehicles that are allowed to be stored on these, you know, the commercial property, and again, the Food Town parking lot, you'll notice the tractor-trailer in back of that beautiful hot dog stand, makes our small businesses look like industrial parks. It is an eyesore. Residents and business owners pay way too much taxes to be exposed to this carnival-like type of business or tactic rolling about. We're in dire need of fast-track and proactive representation to get rid of them for good. This type of business eyesore. It impacts property values for nearby homes, and it lowers the business revenues for the nearby eateries, the brick-and-mortar businesses and convenience stores, who actually pay taxes to the township, unlike this roving extravaganza. Also respectfully request the administration and council look thoroughly into how this, the township clerk's office or the township, whomever, gave the blessing to this hot dog stand? Or was this done in haste? Did zoning know about it? You know, during the Letts administration, Mayor Letts's administration, I remember we got rid of the, the homes on wheels. I thought at that point in time, maybe some lawmakers, local lawmakers, would have had some foresight to prevent more establishments on wheels, to prevent them from setting up shop. Apparently not, because now, not only do we have this whole hot dog wholesaler extravaganza squatting at Lake Hiwatha legally, from what I'm understanding, but we got a matching porn shop hot dog stand on 46 and New Road that apparently we can't get rid of despite the township's efforts in trying to do so, unfortunately. So while we're on the subject of aesthetics, I want to talk about other things. The pictures that you see, they have many problems, as you can see. The Route 46 chain link fence on the median near the Arlington Shopping Center. All that's needed here is the barbed wire to complete the Alcatraz look. Okay? I'm confident I speak for many residents when I say the sitting members of the council and the sitting mayor did the east side of town a great disservice when they voted for this. Residents and owners are enduring years of this ugly sight that aesthetically plagues this business quarter. The so-called safety fence is unable to stop cars from careening and plowing through onto the other side of the highway. It does nothing to stop the pedestrians from crossing over, vandalizing the fence, crawling underneath. And before Mr. Anglaccino goes into his legal prose, because I come here just for that, Mr. Anglaccino, your legal prose, on how removing this fence would.
(laughing).
Yeah, exactly. On how this, you know, removing this fence, now that we've kind of committed to it, exposes this town to increased liability. I, I want to tell you, there are many pedestrian hits, even with this fence up. And your township-elected officials are sitting here not to collectively throw your hands up in the air and say, oh, okay, we're committed to this fence, so we're married to it, and we're not going to do anything about it. I recommend officials think outside the box. Work together with the state DOT. They have an exclusive government and community relations department that likely will help this township. Pick up the phone, call them, they don't bite. They will help you. We need a more durable, eye-friendly structure that will facilitate a favorable solution for the township while improving the aesthetics that are sorely needed to be improved in the Lake Hiwatha and the east end of town. I urge council and administration members to provide real help now to us property and business owners in the Rickland, Lake Hiwatha sections and all over town before we lose valuable residents who care about the upkeep of our surroundings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let me just correct some history on, on what you had in there, okay?
The council never discussed that fence or voted on that fence. So you can scratch that part out. Mayor Luther put that request into the state directly. We didn't know about it until the fence was up.
Okay, so whomever is behind it?
I just told you.
I seem to remember speaking to you about it, and I could have sworn you told me there was action that the council took.
No.
After Mayor Luther.
I never said that.
Agreed to it. But nonetheless, it is a great disservice to the east side of town. It is ugly, is litter-ridden, and we need help with it.
And I agree with everything you say, okay? But the liability issue is there.
No taken, thank you.
If I can respond, because, you know, we need to respond to the, well-taken. Nancy, now you and I talked about it, and there was a letter that was written to the NJDOT from Mayor Luther with regards to having a fence out. And the reason was that the, yes, maybe some, you think some projections get hit now, but that was the reason why Mayor Luther did it. I didn't like it when I came in. First thing that I did, well, one of the things I did, I was like, I'm like, I want to get this thing down, you know? And then when I found out it was done by a former mayor, and the reasons were for the safety and public welfare of anybody crossing that street. Now, that being said.
There was a fatality.
Huh?
There was a fatality.
Yeah, there was a fatality. But that being said, it was discussed at a council meeting to possibly remove it. A member of the public came up, Lee Keimel, came up and he petitioned to not take it down, and he gave his reasons why.
I remember that.
And the reasons were, the fact that, you know what, he'd like to see it all the way down Route 46 for the public's safety and welfare, because people do cross. And not only that, someone that's irresponsible and crosses can cause accidents to those that are driving. Okay, that being said. Where I do agree with you, Nancy, is that we have to make it more aesthetically pleasing.
Absolutely.
All right, and we need, those are the things we can do. I would hate to be the administration or the council that takes it down and then somebody does get killed.
Well, again, if we absolutely.
So that's something I wouldn't want, want to do.
Well, here, time's, time's up.
Oh, sorry.
We'll discuss afterwards.
We can discuss.
You know, but that, that's, that's the fact.
I've actually seen, the fence was put up because of the, the kitchen workers, Holiday Inn and some other stores in that area, okay, crossing over with their bicycles.
But I.
I actually have seen them now throw their bicycles over the fence, climb the fence and go. So it hasn't even stopped them, they're still doing it, taking their lives at risk.
But the fact is this, the fact is this, we do have to find a, like, like Nancy said, adorable and aesthetically pleasing compromise with the DOT, which, you, you work for the DOT?
No, I don't work for the DOT.
Oh, I think, you work for the.
I work for a subsidiary.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. I thought you worked for the state of New Jersey.
I do.
Okay, I just wanted, I just, so, go ahead.
No, Mayor, you know, being a police officer in town for 20 years, I see many people get hit in that area, even with the fence up, and many more without the fence being up. But, yeah, there definitely needs to be something more aesthetically, and at the same time, you want to prevent a car from crossing that, over that barrier.
And you know they do.
Yeah, absolutely. Because you'll wind up hitting somebody else on uncoming, you know, traffic there. So needless to say, whatever needs to be put up, need, well, what are you talking about this, this island here, before that?
If you look at Fairfield, with all due respect, if you look at Fairfield, they have a higher concentration of hotel workers than you do.
No, but I will tell you.
Right where that is, there's a lot of traffic.
I will tell you, working in this town for 20-plus years, my point is, something needs to be placed there, but not only for preventing people, but preventing cars from going across that, because over the years, trust me, you'd be amazed what goes across those islands and almost with, you know, traffic being hit head-on, so.
4:30, you go there, 4:30 on.
Absolutely.
Till 7 o'clock. It's, it's, it's a mad, it's a madhouse over that way.
Absolutely.
So, you know, where I do agree is we can, you know, work with the DOT. I mean, I would like for them to save the township. You could maintain it at such and such, maybe reimburse, because I think we can maintain it probably better than the state, because we could get to it more. So those.
Mayor, one of the things we talked about when we hired Mrs. Sandman was her ability to get grants for us and to get more money back to Parsippany from the state. I remember there was beautification grants that were for the beginning opening part of Parsippany where Monville ended and Parsippany started. We never really utilized those funds. The administration at that time never utilized those funds. Can we look into that, Ms. Sandman?
Absolutely, yes.
Just to see if there's any grants for beautification on the Route 46 corridor? Because we, we do need to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I know, I, I agree with the resident, what she's saying. I, I see the pictures, but I, I see it by driving by every day, and I agree wholeheartedly. We do have to beautify that area.
And if I may add.
That's why I gave her my card also. And it also has my cellphone.
If I add, may I add more, one, one more thing with regards to the hot dog stands? We've gotten many complaints about this hot dog stand. Legally, we have to see what we can really do, and, and, you know, we, we try to get ahold of the owner of the property, and from what that owner said, never gave him permission, but he will give him permission, from what we, from what I understand. The, the owner of that property will give the guy permission to use it if he wants to. So now we have to find out, can, can they do that? Can we allow them to do it? I mean, we have, you know, so, believe me, when I tell you, this one, this is going to become a battle, but maybe it's a battle worth fighting.
Well, yeah, actually.
I don't know why we didn't win it. But I mean, I want to find out if it's illegal, or can they have it? Well, yeah, I'll find out, with the reasons.
Madam Clerk, can we get a copy of the current ordinance for food vending circulated to the council, so we can review it and see if we can strengthen that ordinance in conjunction with the mayor? Thank you.
That didn't come before, that never came before me.
Oh, so, we'll get it before you. And we'll see anything else?
And that, the stance you were talking about with the old, uh.
That's the first I heard of it.
The Jersey Central Power and Light, actually, this is a.
On 46, the stand here?
That's a Verizon line. Yeah, so we'll get, okay, we'll call Verizon tomorrow, and the last one is.
Mayor, there's a stand there for.
It's the billboard, remember?
Ah, the billboard, yes, the billboard. Listen, I, I don't, don't quote me, because this is what I think I remember hearing. The fact is that they can't go there with heavy equipment, because, from what I understand, there's heavy gas, there's gas lines there. But I, I could be wrong, because I remember Rena, God rest her soul, explained, discussed that with me. But we will get on the landlord's case on that, because he owned that whole snow goose area.
Yeah, it's really.
That's what you thought about, correct?
Yeah, it's undesirable, yeah.
Mayor, Mr. Leroy owns that property, the old snow goose, and also the adjacent property, where he does have signage that appears breaking our ordinance from time to time. So I'd like to have that spot cleaned up. That's a billboard that fell down through one of the.
I know, I know exactly what it is.
I don't believe we need heavy equipment to remove that.
We have been, we have been, it has been, I, I really can't get into it, because it's going to probably hit the litigation, but, Mr., I know the man you're talking about, so.
If we can, can we enforce it too through our housing department to actually.
I'll see about reporting.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for those issues. Sir?
Already signed in, my name is Gottfried, last name is Church. I reside at 16 Lockswood Drive, Parsippany. I'm here kind of concerned, because I came into Parsippany 2000, yeah, 2000, and three of my kids went to Parsippany, Rockaway Meadow, Central, the high school. Right now, 107 in England for the United States Air Force.
Nice, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, which I just went to visit him. But my concern is this power line. I'm here with the rest of my neighbors, and it concerns me, because I know I just retired also from Easton Municipal Government, Forest for the Water Company. I worked hard, bought the house, and it's going to have to go to my kids, as everyone knows. And my concern is whatever the devaluation of my property because of those electric lines. I mean, JCP and L, and they, they, I know they're a big powerhouse, I'm not afraid of them, but it's like I'm hearing a syndrome. A syndrome of what? Big guy, don't care what they want to do, but the impact of finance, far as the devaluation of my property, is a concern. Not only my concern, I mean, you have several people in the area, how many houses going to be affected? And that's, they should have some kind of consideration. If, if JCP and L, you paying that bill, I believe, and I sincerely believe, I'm their boss, because I pay their bill. Now, you're talking about David and Goliath? Well, I think there's somewhere along the line that the city should say, hold up. You are getting ready to impact on a certain amount of, and I know they go through this hundreds of thousands of times all over, maybe the whole state, and maybe, you know, wherever their, their lines are. But at least we're talking about, there are considerations for other ways that their, their line can go? Why isn't there some serious sit-downs and discussions to say, okay, let's really see how we can, you know, help out these poor folks to take that line and put it where it wouldn't impact? You know? I mean, I sat down and, and I drew some kind of path. I'm not recommending anything, but I'm saying, just like anybody else, not in my backyard. You know? And please, whatever this council can do, please just help out, do it. That's all I ask. Okay? And, and, one last thing, I, I understand they're supposed to be, uh, put off for a meeting, or, you know, I just overheard.
My meeting with the mayor of Monville, who's, uh, wants the other route. So it gets pretty delicate, some of these things, so. If we can all find a, a route that works, I hope we can, we're going to try, but, you know, we can't promise nothing.
Well, whatever, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm here to ask, do whatever you can for me and my neighbors. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Church, I, I just want to address the comment that I had made earlier again. It's, it's very important that we have this public meeting, so, you know, I know myself, I'm recommending to the clerk right now to, to contact Pre-Hold the Director, Tom Masalangelo, have this public meeting where you, your residents, all of our fellow residents that are here can actually have a dialogue and, and discuss their concerns. So, you know, our action is to actually gather the information, get it back to you, invite you to an open public meeting, you know, we want you involved, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Linda Lang, I'm at 2 Parker Avenue, Cedar Knolls. The reason I'm here, I came for one reason. I wanted to see about the, opposing the Pilgrim Pipeline, because that'll definitely affect my town if you oppose it. And I'm, I'm hoping that you do, but I'm wondering if there has been a decision made or.
Well, that's coming up for us to vote.
It's on there to be passed tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so then I should just wait. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to know on ordinance introductions, 2014-19, can you tell me exactly what that is, what you're purchasing, where it is? And under resolutions, 20, R. 2014-105, appointing Ellen to other responsibilities. I want to know, well, is the salary set as is, or will there be more money given in regards to that? You can answer those questions at the end. One thing I had mentioned a while ago in regards to those trucks, the hot dog trucks and stuff, is I know on Long Island, they have to get licenses, and they're told where to go. So you might want to check with some of the places that have these ordinances and rules already in place. And Dolly was right, we forgave 32,000 in a Knoll Country Club with their water bill. That's not right. I've said that when it happened, and now it, it didn't even dawn on me until she said it. That's disgusting, that again, we give to it rather than a resident. Okay, now the biggest part of my problem is, my letter dated 1/14. Did anybody leak a look at this? Guys, I'm tired. I do not see why I have to stand here, meeting after meeting, from January 14th until June 17th, waiting for a response from the council. This letter was directed to the council members, each and every one of you up there. This was your responsibility to get these answers to me. Okay, nobody else's, I asked you guys to do that. Now, the transparency, you better get that transparency committee up and running, because it's disgusting. Nobody is being transparent. I'd like answers to these questions. And if, am I going to get them tonight? Or no?
Pat, I can tell you that we went over your questions and that they have been answered as far as what we can answer?
No, I don't think so. I asked whether or not you would rescind the resolution. I asked you why we made payment to the mayor. I asked you why we made payment to the mayor and to Mr. Stanton when their services were prior to the enactment of the legal fees ordinance?
There was no ordinance.
Resolution? John, please, don't go tit-for-tat with me on this, okay? It's a resolution ordinance, I don't care what it is. January, January.
Right, I think that the, the resolution that was passed by the governing body...
I asked the governing body to answer the question. Do other towns have such a resolution? Did you check into other towns? Do we really have the necessity to do this? What was the necessity? That one meeting that was called by Mayor Barbario on January thirteenth brought this on? Did the town council vote to have Mayor Barbario's attorney be reimbursed? Did council members know Mayor Barbario was reimbursed? We had over a total of ten thousand dollars that came out of the taxpayers' money, whether a small amount, whether you consider it a small amount or not, I don't. I don't see paying somebody for bills incurred prior to when something was adopted. That is not how you work. I, I really, I'm steamed with all of you sitting up here right now, I really am. Was councilman, now, the reason that resolution was written up was because we were told the mayor, John Inglisino, and Brian Stanton were on official business. Why was Lou Valori there? Lou Valori was not a councilman. I want these answers. I, I don't know why I can't get these answers, except that there's no transparency. I'm not getting cut off, Brian, I'm sorry. Not since this has been going on since January. And if Mr. Stanton was acting in his official status that night, who in the township authorized it? None of the council members that were sitting, council members at that time knew that meeting was happening, except for Mr. Stanton. It was an official meeting, there are still no minutes on the township website. Township attorney forgot to charge us, I asked whether or not he eventually did charge us.
Pat, I gotta...
I also asked for Brian?
Pat, I have to stop you here.
How can you stop me on a letter that I gave you guys in January? I'll sit down, I don't have a problem with sitting down, but to me, you're all failing up here, okay? This is ridiculous, that I cannot get answers to these simple, simple questions. And I know the reason for it. You better knock it off, guys, I'm telling you. You better start being transparent, you better start letting the people know what the heck is going on in this town. I want answers, please, by next week, if I don't get them, call me, let me know I'm not gonna get them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, can you answer the other two questions?
Yes, Council President, can I answer the one question with regard to every municipality, every municipality in the state of New Jersey who's required to have a certified municipal finance officer? Now that Joe is gonna be leaving, and we're in the process of doing our due diligence... Okay, okay, I want... I'm gonna get to that, because I'm making a nice buildup here. You can, do my three minutes. Anyway, no, no. In all seriousness, in all candor, you know, as you know, I've been doing this for forty years, one of the most important things, I thought, to make me a better employee of any community that I worked for, was to have this certification. So I went to the classes on my time, and I paid for the classes on my, you know, on my dime, and, except they started me with one, you know, one time, and I said, I gotta get it finished, I gotta finish it. So I am a certified municipal finance officer, I will not, you get the whole package, that was part of my, you know, thing, no, there will be no additional compensation, no, I'm seriously, but it's a sacred trust to me, because this is not just a job to me, Pat, and you know, we had our conversation out in the hallway, it's a sacred trust, it also is my avocation, you know, because, I mean, this is what I do, day and night, I am the one, and I'm happy to be here, I'm thrilled to be here, and I, you know, I do that because that, that just, just, just makes me more committed to the community that I am, I am here, so, that's, that's...
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
I don't know, what was her, what was her first question?
The first question was, in regards to twenty fourteen nineteen.
Yeah, you want to take that one?
Ellen, one of the, not Ellen, wow, Pat, you know, I'm having one of those nights, you could tell why I'm leaving, I can't remember, I can't remember who I am anymore. If I start calling myself Batman, don't pay attention. One of the things are, you know how we spoke about during the budget hearings, what you sat through, where the ambulances are rotting out? One of the things that the township has started to do is take a look at properties, possibly put a housing area up for them. That's exactly what it's for, you're saying what property?
I know what it is.
Right. There's, there's no properties that have been identified, that's a number in the budget that would cover the cost, presumptive costs for both property acquisition, if properties to be acquired, as well as capital improvements that would be made for whatever property is, is, is chosen.
Okay.
Pat, also, I just wanted to comment that myself and Councilman Valori, we were not councilmen at the time this occurred.
Yeah.
So if I had answers to it, I would have given them to you. Also, I don't recall seeing the questions, I believe if it were not the last meeting, the prior meeting, you had given a copy to the clerk to circulate. Madam Clerk, did you circulate that to us, because I don't see it in my package? Are we gonna circulate her questions to us?
I don't remember that request.
Do you remember that, Pat?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I did not receive it, so I apologize.
What I'll do is, I got an extra copy, I did make an extra copy.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you can just circulate the copy to us, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Nelson, two oh two Patriots Road, um, with Pat just said, or I guess what John just responds, has a town put any offers on any properties?
Mr. Nelson, the township will not discuss contract negotiations with you in public session or with you at all.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
You should know that.
Yeah, you're right, fair, fair enough. When Mrs. Patel was speaking, and they referred to the Knoll, I might have been bringing that up, but my question is, and, and really think hard, if you don't know the answer, just say you don't know, and you'll get back to me on it. Are there any properties in town that we don't charge for water and sewer? And I'm not talking about government, town-owned properties, but are there any non-township-owned properties that we don't charge water and sewer for?
I'm gonna get back to you with that.
Fair enough, I, I wouldn't expect you to give me an answer right off the, right off the cuffs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Consent agenda?
Before it's read, I have a couple that I want to ask, if we can please pull for discussion, R two thousand fourteen dash zero ninety-five asterisk.
Which one was that again?
Alphador.
Alphador. Alphador.
Resolution, where township authorized agreement with Alphador Solutions. We had some discussions during the budgetary process about that.
What was the second one?
Is there another one or no?
The other one I had a question on was R two thousand fourteen dash zero ninety-six and dash zero ninety-seven. You know, I fully support our veterans, but I just wanted to get an explanation on it, it's the first time seeing this.
You don't have to pull it for that, you can get your explanation.
No, we don't have to pull it, I just want an explanation.
But you, do you want ninety-five pulled?
Yes, ninety-five, please pull.
Yeah, so ninety-six and ninety-seven, is that where, I guess, these are vets?
Disabled, disabled vets.
So they're, they're, they're getting...
They're primarily disabled vets and they're tax-free.
Yeah, we're on...
Are these veteran homes that are owned by a private agency, or are they private residential homes?
These are private owners, and they've been classified by the government as one hundred percent disabled vets, and as such, they are permitted, if someone could explain it better than me, my basic explanation, they're exempt from paying property taxes.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's what we want. I just get a little confused on the wording here, authorizing the cancellation and refund the property taxes, that's what I don't understand.
They're canceling the taxes and refunding.
So they're canceling their tax, they're canceling their taxes?
And they're refunding them what they've...
Oh, okay, that's fine, I got a little bit confused on that, yeah, okay.
Okay, because this, this is a legal doctrine by the veteran administration to be accurate. Okay, that's why I wanted to ensure.
I believe so, yes.
Because they shouldn't have been charged to begin with, why are we refunding?
That's where I got confused too, now.
They probably just identified themselves.
Unless they had a mortgage, and it was automatically taken out from their bank.
That could be too.
Okay, all right, it's good, all right, good. Please pause, absolutely, thank you.
So you want to remove ninety-five, that requires a motion, or it could just be removed?
Only ninety-five, okay.
Okay.
Be by consent of the council.
Yep.
So it would need a motion to remove?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so make that motion to remove R two thousand and fourteen dash zero ninety-five and table it.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
The motion is to remove it from the consent agenda and table it, that's, that's a double motion?
No, to, to, to remove it for a table for the discussion.
For this evening, or to table to another?
Either, either you're, this is on the consent agenda, you need two different motions then. You need one motion to remove it from the consent agenda, that has to get voted on.
Okay, don't stay with it.
And then when it's separated, separated, then you can make whatever other motion you want.
Okay, good.
It'll be good.
Okay, so the motion is to remove it from the consent agenda, R two thousand and fourteen zero ninety-five.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes, I have no problem with removing it.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton? Mr. Valori?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Consent agenda be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the township council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members are requested, in which case the item be removed from the consent, consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Ordinance two thousand fourteen, colon seventeen, Mr. Valori?
Yes. An ordinance establishing white collar salary ranges for two thousand and fourteen, be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council, the township of Passipony Troy Hills, held on June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on July fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Two thousand fourteen, colon eighteen, Mr. DePiero?
An ordinance of the township, council of the township of Passipony Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending section four dash seven-four committees of the Code of Township of Passipony Troy Hills. It is resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Passipony Troy Hills, held on June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, and that said ordinance be further considered for a second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on July fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven thirty PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. It further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Ordinance two thousand fourteen, colon nineteen, Mr. Peluso?
I just want to note that the council president has a date change that I'll be reading, instead of July fifteenth, it'll be July eighth, two thousand and fourteen, I'll start from the beginning. An ordinance of the township of Passipony Troy Hills and the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for the acquisition of property and preliminary costs associated with the renovation of an existing building for township services for the township of Passipony Troy Hills, and appropriating seven hundred thousand dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of six hundred and sixty-five thousand in general improvement bonds or notes of the township of Passipony Troy Hills to finance the same. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Passipony Troy Hills, held on June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on July eighth, two thousand and fourteen. Please note that correction, at seven thirty PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in the said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning the said ordinance. It further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise the said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Okay, resolutions on a non-consent agenda, we have a presentation by Mrs. Cazarelli. You'll have thirty seconds.
He wants the Pilgrim Pipeline.
I tried.
We hear one.
Okay, everybody, on June twenty-second, twenty thirteen, the township's pumping
Mrs. Cazarelli, could you just grab the mic?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. What about that? Here we go. What you're looking at is a picture of the Skyview Pump Station. This is located on Meadow Bluff Road, it was built in nineteen eighty-eight. This sewage pump is a very high-pressure pump, it, it's a pump, it pumps sewage through a force main traversing the western slope of the Wantung Mountain to a gravity main on the other side of the mountain near Route ten. This design, as I had mentioned, is a high-pressure, high-maintenance station, which does pose an inherent danger each time personnel, personnel enter it. You see this area here? That area goes down about eighteen feet, that is where our personnel has to go into the wet well to do any kind of maintenance on this pump. There is a low-pressure and a high-pressure pump in there. Just imagine that they're going underground eighteen feet, and this pump has pressures to push sewage, and you'll see up and over the mountain, okay? In, in any event, I did mention, it does service one bathhouse, sixty-six family, single-family homes, one hundred and ninety-four town homes pumping an average of fifty gallons per day. Here is another picture of the station, and I'm gonna explain to you what the failure was. The failure was a result of a collapsed force main, which is one mile in length, so you can imagine how much pressure this pump station has to pump, one mile in length, up and over the mountain. This caused severe pressure resulting in multiple failure modes for the pump station operation, pump station failed. Emergency operations were engaged, and wastewater was temporarily pumped out of the wet well and into the township by a pipe bypass manhole, to a bypass manhole, okay, with a cloth hose. Efficiency was paramount, a submersible pump was installed in the wet well, and an overland bypass line was installed to carry waste to Mars Plain Sewer System with the eventual deposit into the Mars Township Butterworth Plant. This hard, whoops, a little too fast. This here soft cloth pipe was replaced with a hard pipe, and I would like to give our sewer staff a little pl... This here soft cloth pipe was, um, replaced with a hard pipe, and I would like to give our sewer staff a little, uh, plos here, because if you recall how cold the winter is, this is an above-ground sewage line which could have frozen. Uh, these folks took extra care and maintenance in watching that line. It was double insulated with metal tape, heat tape, so they did a great job with that. So what does the township do? The township has to do its due diligence. There were three options put in front of us, and the most immediate option was to send our flow, which would be the, uh, the obvious one, to our neighboring town. That's where our bypass was going, so why not look into a permanent connection into our neighboring towns? Of course, our line would have to go through Mars Township and then through Mars Plains. And the project would include removing the Skyview, Skyview Road Pump Station and replacing it with a submersible unit. We would then construct a force main of twenty-eight hundred feet and then, uh, and then an eight-inch gravity line of three hundred and eighty feet long. Of course, this new, uh, pump station would, following the bypass route, would go through the borough of Mars, Mars Plains, and then discharge to a point in the man, in a manhole on Mountain Way and Kathleen Place for the final treatment at the Butterworth Plant. Just looking at the one-year cost of that option, this township was looking at almost one point five million dollars. Over the course of three years, we're looking at three point two million dollars. This is a result of a lot of charges that were put in place by our neighboring towns, and then, of course, there's a, uh, looking out ten years is how much it would cost to treat our waste, um, in that, in that direction. Township continue to look at his options, okay? Option number two is, why don't we keep the flow in Par Troy? Par Troy would be abandon the current pump station, construct a pump station at the same site. That would also include modifying the Powder Mill One pump station and replacing over a half-mile of force main. Keep in mind, you're still dealing with high, high pressure here. This particular option is still not, uh, addressing safety. In addition to, let's take a look at the cost. So we're looking at a total one-year cost of, uh, again, almost close to one point five million. Uh, ten-year projected cost is two point, almost two point two million dollars. Township continue to do its due diligence. The next option, the third option, was to send our flow to Greystone. Well, this was a bit of an obstacle, um, because the state does not act as a municipal utilities authority. The state doesn't take municipal waste. It took this township, uh, a lot of effort to work with the state and to, um, come about this, this here arrangement, option number three. Option number three, again, replace with a submersible pump. It's similar to, uh, the Par Troy. However, we don't need to have, uh, we don't need to upgrade the Powder Mill pump here, nor do we need a very high-pressure, high-maintenance, uh, inherent and dangerous situation for our employees. This here, you're looking at a half a million dollars per year and one point two million dollars over the ten-year period. This is a summary of our options. I want you to keep in mind that, of course, cost is a very important factor. However, cost is not the only driving force here. Um, if we're going to go back to option number two, Par Troy, keep in mind, that particular option required, again, a very high-pressure, high-maintenance system. Not only that, that option would disturb all of our residents. So think about digging up a half-mile of road all throughout, um, that would be a disturbance to our residents. Uh, in addition to the other issue with Par Troy is that, that particular method would have lasted an additional year, by the way, an additional year. We have an emergency, so we're going to tack on another year, uh, beyond really the projected eight months to get, uh, option number three up and going. So that, that is not a viable solution. Option number three, which is the Greystone Route, that will allow the township to, most of it is going through state property, minimal residential disturbance, and most of it will be underground directional drilling. So it will not affect any roadways for the most part. It's very important that, and of course, Mars Plains' option to, also, was in escalated form, and that, that one was also based on money, but keep, keep in mind now, we don't have control over the fees that Mars Town and Mars Township are going to charge this municipality in years to come. Right now, their, their fees are almost double what residents pay to treat waste. We have a very, very good, um, rate structure here for our sewage system. So in closing, I am very pleased to say that not only is Roy still here, not only did the state pass that arbitration, well, Phil Bober and I went in front of the State Assembly and Assemblyman in part of the Department of Human Services, who was responsible for that, and we sat there and the state voted yes to Precipity. They are in support of this. They understand our situation, and, um, they have given us, granted us permission for easements to go through their property and connect to their treatments, their treatment system. Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Council President, the, uh, in order for, uh, the township to take advantage of option number three, um, if, we will need a new wastewater management plan. Um, we can't get an amendment. We would need a new wastewater management plan because, um, we're outside the sewer service area in order to make this connection. As you may recall, some time ago, the township had petitioned, started the process of Highlands Conformance by petitioning the Highlands Council for, uh, planned conformance. We really hadn't progressed, uh, all that far, uh, through that process, but since we had filed the initial petition, um, the Highlands Council would have jurisdiction to work with, uh, D E P, um, on, uh, a new wastewater management plan for Precipity. And in order for the Highlands Council to, uh, you know, complete our wastewater management plan and then submit to D E P, we would have to get much further along in the conformance process. In doing that, we would jeopardize, uh, a couple of desired projects in the township would be jeopardized because of Highlands-related issues. One would be the redevelopment of Edwards Road, uh, which the town has already declared in need of redevelopment. Redevelopment plan is in process, um, and, uh, if that's approved, that would result in some residential, but it would also provide a significant, uh, public benefit, as you may recall, in terms of mitigation of flooding on Edwards Road. The other property that, uh, Mr. Snikus identified that would be adversely affected would be Morris Corporate Five. That property, as you know, the council declared in need of redevelopment, and there's a contemplated, uh, significant, uh, corporate, uh, build-to-suit, uh, project, um, that is likely to go on that project. So, um, the other option that we have, so if we, if we proceed with Highlands Conformance, Highlands would review the wastewater management plan, prepare it, and work with D E P to get it implemented, but we would be jeopardizing, um, going forward with some, uh, desired projects. So given the timing of the circumstance, the other alternative would be to rescind, um, the petition for, uh, Highlands Conformance, come outside of the Highlands, which you have the option to do. You can always opt out. It's not like the Hotel California. Uh, and, um, and, and then Morris County would be your conduit for the wastewater management plan preparation and, and approval by D E P. Um, at some later point in time, uh, when it makes sense, you always have the option of opting back into the Highlands for Highlands Conformance. Um, I've spoken with the Highlands Council representatives at length, uh, and they indicated that if, if this resolution passes and at some future point, uh, Precipity would want to opt back into the Highlands, that they would work with us, um, towards the goal of perhaps, uh, providing center status to the desired properties, um, that I mentioned, Edwards Road, Morris Corporate Five. And if there are any additional properties to be identified by, uh, Mr. Snikus, that we would not want to be, uh, you would not want to be adversely impacted by the Highlands. If there were center designations created for those, uh, properties, uh, then you could opt back into the Highlands, uh, and, and have, you know, true conformity between the Highlands and your master plan. You don't have to make that decision tonight. The decision tonight to opt out, if that's what you want to do, the resolution that's prepared would do that, would simply, um, enable us to proceed, uh, with a new wastewater management plan, uh, with Morris County, and would also permit, uh, the township to proceed with the two projects, uh, that were mentioned, unaffected by the Highlands.
I have a question. Um, Mr. Inglesino, you had mentioned identifying properties. Um, Mrs. Cazarelli, I just want to also, uh, get you involved in conversation. Um, the identified property Miss Inglesino had mentioned, uh, was one of them on Edwards Road, and he said several others as well. Um, is Edwards Road referred to as where our current sewer treatment plant is? Because that's actually South Edwards Road.
The, uh, oh, okay. I believe you're talking about the, uh, Edwards Road near Route forty-six.
Correct.
Yeah. The plant is, uh, and quite honestly, I guess that would.
It's South Edwards Road.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not going to guess a direction.
It's west, it's, 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 it's west of the existing.
It's by across from the Wawa.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct for the record. That's actually, uh, considered South Edwards Road.
Okay.
It is? Oh, okay.
It's still Edwards, I believe.
I would think it's, uh, the east side of Edwards.
The, the specific property. Yeah, the specific property had previously been declared as an area in need of redevelopment by the governing body, so that's, that's what we're talking about.
Does that pertain to the properties that's for sale on Edwards Road?
I, I just don't recall exactly which, which properties they are. Suffice to say, for these purposes, uh, there were, there were presentations made. There was a, uh, an area in need of, of redevelopment, a polite study done, declaration passed by the council that pertains to those properties. I think the location of those properties for these purposes is not really what's important.
But I can answer his question if you want.
Please, thank you, Mike.
All right, instead of a long explanation, right?
Well, it's so, it's not so young.
There's two pieces of property involved with this. One is on the, on the piece of property on, along Edwards Road, which is near, closer to the highway, right? There's a, there's a, a daycare center there, um, and there's donuts around the daycare center. It also includes property on the north side of Edwards Road, behind the Wawa, which is a great big open area, um, and the intention, if this, the reason we approved this redevelopment is, that big piece of property behind the Wawa would be a detention basin. Uh, and the developer would build at his expense. You know how new road floods?
Yes.
Now, every time we have heavy rains, okay? The D E P would never let us raise new roads. To prevent it from flooding, because we would be altering the flow of water, which is a no-no to them. So what would be done now is there'd be a pipe so that the water can flow into this detention basin. We're not altering the flow, and once that pipe is installed, we can raise new road. The water can still go into the detention basin. So we've approved this, uh, this arrangement because we want that detention basin, and we want to raise new road.
Now, thank you, Mike. Your question, I wasn't on council back then, but I understand some of what you're saying. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Uh, Councilman, um, the Council President, if I might, might add, I've been involved with, um, getting involved with the Highlands, uh, in my past, uh, my past lives, and, um, I, I would say that there's no true downside, because as the, um, our attorney is saying, you can always opt in. Remember, you're in the planning stage. You can, you can get out, and you can always go back in. There's a more upside of a win-win with regard to what you just talked about, Mike, and also the fact that, I believe strongly that the, the county in, in looking at our wastewater could move much more quickly and much more succinctly in working with municipalities with regard to, to doing that in a more efficient manner. I'm not taking anything away from the Highlands, but I will tell you this, the county is well-equipped to do this and do this in a very good fashion. That's, that's my, my experience with dealing with them over the last twenty-seven years.
Okay, R two thousand and fourteen dash one oh two, Resolution Township Council, Township of Precipity Troy Hills, rescinding its intention to revise the master plan development regulations for planned conformance for land in Highlands planning area.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton. Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Mr. Valori, one oh three, please.
Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, authorizing the execution and grant of an easement or stormwater purposes affecting township property located along Precipity Road, identified as block three eight eight, block three on tax map of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton. Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Mr. DePiero.
Resolution two thousand and fourteen dash one oh four, Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, opposing the pilgrim pipeline.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton. Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Mr. Peluso, one oh five, please.
Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, consenting to the appointment of Ellen M. Sandman as temporary acting director of finance, treasurer, and comptroller, and as acting financial officer.
Second.
To approve.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, closed session. Resolution whereas the Open Publics Meetings Act, P L nineteen seventy-five, chapter two thirty-one permits the exclusion of the public.
Before you, before you do that. We moved two thousand and fourteen dash oh ninety-five from the consent agenda, but then we didn't take any action on it. We made a motion to remove it from the consent agenda, and we did that.
Yes.
We approved the consent agenda, but we took no action with this after that.
Didn't you want to table it? Yeah, you want to table it. Didn't you say you want to table it? Yeah.
So make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table R two zero fourteen dash zero ninety-five.
Second.
Before, all right, we're, we're in discussion stage. A motion is made and seconded. What, what happens if we don't, if we table this and, and don't renew their contract?
They're month to month anyway.
Well, they go month to month, my right?
Well, actually, one of my concerns is, quite honestly, is that, uh, Alpha Dog is close to exceeding the bid limit. I do not recommend tabling this ordinance, I mean, this, uh, resolution. We are already at a point where the township is pretty much at the point where we've got to make a decision. Uh, we can't continue to pay a bill in, in excess of the bid amount. It is a window contract. They, their total bid price, I think, is somewhere around twenty-one thousand dollars. They are somewhere around, and I, I, I can't speculate, but I tell you this, they're very close. And, 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 and if I could just say something about the website, um, one of the things that you're not, not aware of is I have worked with the website. Uh, one of the things we discussed is that, um, efficiency of the website. Uh, that's always been a big contention, contention. Uh, there's a few things with the website that I had saw and I'm, where I've worked with, and Alpha Dog has agreed to make all changes to the website at no charge. What they're going to do is I've asked them to, I'm going to go by memory here. I've asked them to balance out the margins. I've asked them to add a email link. I think it's very important that we have access to our businesses. Um, I want an email, uh, list with our residents. I've also asked them to, uh, add a Twitter feed to our page, so that, uh, automatic messages that the township puts on Facebook, residents can see up online. Uh, I've also asked them to, um, provide Google Analytics. I need to know where people are going and what they're doing, and we need to know what is of interest to them. What was the other issue I, I discussed with them? Yes, and, and then, thank you, Ellen. Ellen and I did discuss this. One of the other issues is, you know, you look at a website and you really want to ask yourself, is it doing what it's supposed to? And it is. People are hitting our website, and there's continued growth every year. Justin and I had mentioned this before, just during Hurricane Sandy, during that ten-day period, that website got sixty-five thousand hits. Not only our residents, but other people were coming to Precipity to find out what was going on during that emergency. You know, if you break down the cost of that website per resident, you're looking at thirty-nine cents a day. So think about it. So think about it. People are getting on-time information, accurate information, and it's doing what it's meant to do. There is an issue with personnel, which we discussed. We discussed in-house, out-house. Right now, this is the best method that is helping to meet our goals and our objectives. And it's important that we recognize what a website is and the purpose of it. And the purpose of it is to get information to our residents and to put the top links on the top, and that's another thing that's been redesigned. One of the things, and thank you, residents, that they pointed out, that where do you find your online payments? It's like buried on the bottom. You know, that's got to come to the top. Mayor's Action Center. Mr. Cahill, you pointed out there are links going to miscellaneous locations. I'm very well aware of that. We are aware of that, and that's something that is in the process of being corrected. As a matter of fact, most of them are corrected. I think there's still a couple that require some updating. Yes?
With all respect, due respect, I admire your passion for the site, which I think they're doing a good job, but I'd like to respect, you know, our peers here who have to make the decision on the amount of money we're going to spend. Not saying that I'm going to vote against it.
Okay.
But we are going into 11:30 at night, we have to go into closed session, so I don't think it's going to be that necessary right now if we were going to table and discuss that in length at another time, but we really have to go on into...
And if I may add one thing, Council, because you're absolutely correct.
We have to be realistic here.
I want to add one thing. When we went with this website, and I've said this during the budget process, what I did was, I had three full-timers in the hall. You're saving money by using this website. I had three full-timers in my office. In lieu of that website, I go with a part-timer, and there's no benefits. So, because the website is starting, it's going to, you know, as time goes on, and the other year goes on, it's just going to continue to grow. The adjustments are going to be made. Paul is working excellent with Alpha Dog, and it's serving the needs of our residents. Saved money on part-timer now instead of a full-timer, and no health benefits. So...
Real quick, if I just may add, last year this came up, I don't, Paul, I don't think you were here yet when this had come up, and I had brought up the fact that did we get other companies to give us a price for the service that they were providing? The exact service that, and Mr. DePiero, you recall, because when I brought that up and I said that there were other companies that could come in cheaper, you said, "Well, it's kind of late now, let's look at it next year." Well, now is the time for us to look at this. I mean, you know, who's to say we can't get a company that may be $15,000 a year and provide the exact same service that we're getting now? I'm not talking about the in-house people, I'm talking about an outside company that may be able to. You know, for us to just pick this company, okay, they're doing a good job, but there may be another company out there that may be able to do just as well of a job at a cheaper price.
Well, you know, one of the reasons why Council President and I tabled it was because I do have some concerns, which was brought up by some of the residents. You know, I'm glad it was brought up that, you know, resident Mr. Cahill indicated that there was links going to other sites. I don't want to wind up in litigation with, you know, utilizing other people's sites where it's improper. That was one of my concerns. Also, I've not seen an analysis of what other websites have cost at other communities. I'd like to see that as well. But furthermore, I went onto the site just to take a look at it, and I noticed they're advertising themselves, you know, on our dime, and it says here in this ordinance, they can over exceed by 17.5 and will not exceed public bidding more than $36,000. So, you know, if we're paying up to $36,000 hypothetically, I don't want to see our vendor advertising themselves, nor do I want to see, when I go onto their link through our website, that Canon has a five-page ad in it as well. And I didn't receive any revenue back to the township for advertising for Canon. Maybe other companies want to host it, which might not be a good, might be a good idea. Maybe we get some companies in the corporate area host our site for us, maybe, sell some ads as a revenue generator. But, you know, I do not want to see Canon, you know, on my website for township taxpayers. So there are concerns, and these are some of the things that I want to talk about, and as Councilman Valori had mentioned, this is not the right form for it. I'm only mentioning it because it's a continuing conversation. All I did was I asked for it to be removed, to table it, so we can talk about it without boring the public on these details, do a cost-benefit analysis, and make an educated decision. So that's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
I just want to make one closing comment. And yes, absolutely, you know, it's always important to do your due diligence. I did it with, you know, I just gave a presentation on due diligence. Keep in mind, once that website goes, you're talking about time down, reconstructing a new one. This is something that you really want to have in hand prior to ending something. And one, yeah, and one of the...
Yeah, but during the budget process, you didn't bring up these details, Rob.
We brought up details.
No, not like this, you didn't. You didn't.
You know, it's also, you know, you mentioned the kind of website it is.
It's right to the last second.
It's a content management website, so they also manage that content for us, and they also bring to my attention, Paula, by the way, you know, you have things on here, you need to look at this, update this. They also ensure that the township's in alignment with best practices, and they follow all rules associated with the best practices that we went over in the beginning of the year. So they do provide additional services than what you see.
Just, I have a raised my hand all the time.
Yes, yes. Yes, Mr. Valori?
What I wanted to, again, I respect everybody's opinion, you know, in regards to, you know, analyzing what's best for the town. I think at the end of the day right now, if we table it, they're still going to be getting paid, am I correct?
Okay, well, we're, like I said...
My feeling is I think they would be very happy to still be getting paid. So my point is...
Actually, legally, they can't continue to get paid if they're over the bid limit.
What's the...
I'm sorry, if they're over 17.5.
So what do they have to know?
Well, what's the duration of their contract?
For a year.
And when does that year end?
December 31, 2014. Well, they don't have one now. They're on a holdover, carryover right now. So it would be, John, from January 1, 2014, to December 31, 2014.
So there wouldn't be any disruption of service on the website if there was a presentation made at the next meeting?
I don't think they would have a problem coming, and I think that would be a good idea.
I think that, like what John said too, I think it just puts it to bed a lot of the question concerns, and listen, you know, Councilman Peluso, he's bringing up the issue here, which I didn't know about, with advertising ads. Now, I don't know how legal that is, but we wouldn't want something being put on there that we didn't know about, that's truly inappropriate, not saying that could happen. But at the end of the day, I just think that we should...
Yeah, no, honestly, I would love to see what you have.
So my point is, let's just kind of like really do homework, do our due diligence, all of us, have them come in, do a presentation, and we're being fair to them, and at the end of the day, we might improve the product.
You know what? Councilman Boy makes a good point. I'll have Alpha Dog in here, because they just have, they should have the opportunity. Anybody else that's want to come for the public and challenge them, just let it go that way.
Thank you.
We might want to get a better...
All right.
If that's the website we're paying for, why would they advertise?
This is a video.
Will we take a roll call?
I don't know what this is.
Do roll call?
Check our website and see if that's on there.
Mr. DePiero.
Oh, yes.
We're doing a roll call.
Roll call to table.
Until when?
July 8. Next meeting. You'll be fine.
We'll have a presentation.
We'll all be here July 8. We'll have a presentation.
Presentation on July 8.
That's perfect.
All right, all right, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Okay, closed session. Resolution whereas the Open Publics Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council, which is to discuss attorney-client privilege and pending litigation and contract negotiations, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Take care, nice to see you again, neighbor.
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Roll call. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.